Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
All right. The next item on the agenda is council comments and announcements. I'd like to begin by just noting that the council held an administrative function session prior to the council meeting this evening. We are working on the city manager's annual evaluation as we did last week, and we are probably going to have one more session, and we should be concluding with it at that point. Anybody else have any comments or announcements? Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I just wanted to ask about the rolling agenda. I see next week that we have a proposed closed session for legal advice.
Yes.
And I know the Open Meetings Act requires a more, better description than just boilerplate, and I wondered if we could have a clarification of what that closed session is about.
It is a closed session to discuss legal implications of our sanctuary city ordinance.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that there will be on the printed agenda for next week a more complete discussion complete with the citations of the proper sections of the law that are referenced.
Great, thank you.
I just had a piece of information to share with the city manager. I've been receiving a bunch of mail back and forth from the property agent and the tenant at the bamboo property. And one of the, and I give that all to the Housing and Community Development Director. There's an elevated blood level for the child who's living in the house, and a big back and forth going on with that, the bamboo issue continues, and the air conditioning issue, which seems like the never-ending issues with this house. And in the letter that they sent today that I gave to Sarah, they noted that over the years of the tenancy, that they hadn't provided air conditioning, and therefore they weren't going to provide air conditioning to this family, and that you could find all that information in the rental data going back for quite a while. And I would like to point out that this is one of the houses where the homeowner has claimed a homeowner exemption, basically stating that they lived in the house, and have been getting that deduction that we talked about, but in fact, they've also admitted that they're renting the house. And so if it's the case that they have been renting the house but claiming that they were personal residents for those number of years, I think that they should pay that money back to the city, the county, and the state soon. Anyone else?
Just want to update the council on the metro development project. I was very pleased that last week I received an update that the county Department of Public Works and Transportation at County Executive Legates, the HEST, has met with the developer EYA, and EYA has been willing to make some revisions to the proposed development at the metro site. I will be following up with my county council colleagues and also with Muriel Bowser in DC to see how we can make sure that this is handled collaboratively, but also make sure that transit is prioritized and that safety concerns are addressed. So I believe that your email should have had the table that I received from the county. If I was remiss, I sent it around to all the other legislators, so if I was remiss and including you, I'm sorry, but I will make sure you get that.
I'd just like to note that the City of Tacoma Park and the Independence Day Committee put on a wonderful Fourth of July celebration as they always do. We are perhaps unusual among local entities in that the primary responsibility for our Fourth of July celebration is actually with a committee of volunteers, many of whom have volunteered for many, many years, decades even, and have put an enormous amount of time and effort into it. And so although the city puts in some funding and provides some assistance to the committee, the committee does generally most of the work and also funds most of the costs, in large part through the sales of raffle tickets. I won't give you the pitch that I gave on the, at the night of the fireworks about buying your raffle tickets because it's too late now, but next year, remember that. But there certainly are a large number of volunteers who put in a great deal of work on this effort, and I just wanted to again thank them for all the work that they did to raise money for this celebration, to put on a wonderful celebration. Again, we have, I think, the best Fourth of July celebration I've ever seen, and it's due to the dedicated work of a large group of volunteers. And I believe Councilmember Siemens and his wife are among those volunteers, so thanks to them also.
Mayor Porter, thank you for the recognition, but as large as the group of volunteers is, we do have openings for new members of the committee, so anyone interested in helping to organize next year's parade and fireworks would ask them to contact me. I would also encourage people to give us feedback on what you thought about this year's parade and fireworks, so that we can do an even better job next year. And you can reach me at the contact information that's on the city website or at my email address, which is tjsseamens@aol.com. Thank you.
And if I can just add a comment or two about the Fourth of July celebration. I had a number of people tell me that they thought it was the best one that they had attended, and I thought it was a really good one. And I was happy that it was perceived to be so good, in spite of the fact that State Highway ripped up Philadelphia Avenue and didn't tell anybody about it and left. Were prepared to leave until our public works folks did a little work. They were prepared to leave, rebar sticking up in the road, abrupt level changes where they had milled the surface, loose gravel, all kinds of difficulties where they just came in right before the fourth and just ripped it up, and were pretty non-responsive in getting back on anything that they could do to help the situation. So I'd also like to really extend thanks to our public works folks for making that difficulty have as little impact as possible. I'd also just like to add one note that during the parade, I had a couple of folks ask me what mileage the car I was riding in got. And I responded honestly at the time that it was unlimited, because even though I was in a, I think, a 56 T-bird, which a lot of people appreciated the color, which was turquoise, in fact, very early in the parade, it overheated and shut down, and we coasted through most of the parade. And the part where we didn't coast, there were a number of people who were watching the parade, mostly young residents, who helped me when I got out and had to push my car. So thanks to all those who helped.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes. We have in front of us the minutes of May the 14th and the 17th. The council also received by email the minutes of May the 29th. People have a chance to look at the May 29th minutes? Do we?
No, I saw the other three, I didn't see that.
Okay, the city clerk has asked that she be allowed to revise the minutes of May this 21st, so I'm pulling those off the list. And so I will consider the 29th if people want to go ahead and adopt those.
I'm sorry, the 29th, yes, I did see those. My mistake.
Okay, all right. Does someone want to move adoption of the minutes of May 14, 17, and 29?
Sorry?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any issues? All right, all those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for comments and items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. That would include things that are on our work session agenda for this evening, or any other item that you'd like to bring before the council. I'd ask when you come up to the podium that you identify yourself, and also if you would keep your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate it, as well as the other folks who are waiting to speak would also appreciate it.
Yep, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. Like to give you guys an update on the demonstration at Supreme Court went. We had a 14th Annual Fast Individual Protest the Death Penalty down at the Supreme Court. We do it every year. And this year, we didn't have as many people as we would have liked, even though the weather was totally cooperative. We did get a lot of good response from the tourists and stuff, you know, we got a lot of petitions signed, we got a lot of postcards signed. We had several speakers who were exonerated from death row. A lot of exonerations from death row were proven to be innocent by DNA and by other methods. So next year, we'd like to see as many people from Tacoma Park down there as possible. We did have several people from Tacoma Park down there this year, and it was wonderful. But also, also, I want to tell everybody, it was a joy riding with Joy Austin Lane in the Fourth of July parade, and with the big peace symbol, you know, which the big peace symbol is what Tacoma Park stands for. And I would also like to see if you guys are going to adopt the resolution for the impeachment of George Bush and Cheney and all the other ones accountable for their actions, because we know that we don't need to have that kind of criminal activity in our government. We need to, as citizens of Tacoma Park, and as a city, we need to speak up against that as much as possible, so. We've got to get Cheney, Bush, and the rest of them impeached, not just impeached. Impeach, really, what that means is you are proven that their word is no good, you know, they've been proven to be liars. Now, what we also got to do is we've got to get them out of office, we've got to get people registered to vote and to vote responsibly this time. This is what happens when people do not vote responsibly. We've got to get the people out there, you know, who are graduating this year, who have already graduated, we've got to get people out there to speak up and get out there and vote, and vote responsibly, like their lives depend on it, because their lives may depend on it, they're the next ones sent to Iraq, or to Afghanistan, or to Iran. And also, I'd like to let you people know that next week, I'll be, this time, I'll be on my way up to Boston, Massachusetts to see my family. I'm going up to see my sister Karen, my brother-in-law Frank, Frankie, and Colleen, my niece and my nephew. And they all say they appreciate what we're doing down here. And yes, we do have to do everything we can to make our city a better place, our schools a better place, our government a better place, and what better place to start than right here in Tacoma Park? And also, also, I just want to thank everybody for what they've done. People are even today telling us how great it was, the parade. Last year's parade was great, this year's parade was even better, next year's parade is going to be even better. And we do, and the main thing we've got to do is now is put our actions where our words were. We have to get that resolution passed.
Thank you, Pat.
Impeach Bush and impeach Cheney, and bring peace to our world. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I hope you have a good trip to Boston, and the impeachment resolution is going to be before the council on the 26th, which is two weeks from today. I'm sorry, the 23rd, which is two weeks from today.
That's great, well, we've got to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Yes. Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Hi, I'm Lisa Moscatello, and I live on Cockrell Avenue, and it was great to see all of you at the parade last week. I thought it was one of the most fun Fourth of Julias here in Tacoma Park. And a lot of us in the Tacoma Park impeachment group were there, and we experienced some harmonic convergence with the national movement to impeach Bush and Cheney, because it just so happened that the day before, the president decided to commute Scooter Libby's sentence, and that seems to have pushed many people over the edge, including our representative in Congress, Congressman Van Hollen, whom we, a couple of us spoke to separately, and he indicated that he was open to consider co-sponsoring HRES 333 in the House of Representatives, which is Representative Kucinich's bill to impeach Cheney. And another coincidence along those lines is July 23rd, Cindy Sheehan is leading a march over several states, which will end in John Conyers' office, Chairman of the House Judiciary Committee, and trying to urge him to come out in favor of impeachment. And she's also recently announced that she plans to challenge the Speaker of the House for her seat in Congress if she doesn't allow members of the House to support this legislation. So that's all happening on July 23rd, so perhaps we'll get some of those people here to witness some of our local history as well. And I want to mention that one of the friends of ours that we're going to introduce later this evening is Zain Alamin, who is going to address some of the aspects of civil liberties violations that have affected residents here in Tacoma Park that make this an even more urgent matter for us. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Larry Silverman. I reside on 7308 Birch Avenue here in Tacoma Park. I want to talk to you very briefly about stormwater and about the stormwater utility that you operate. I'm encouraged to think you're interested in this by experience. I had a Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City. They had a number of very excellent classes on water management, municipal water management, and I think I went to most or all of them, I think. And I think I saw Mr. Sniffer at every one of them, so I guess he shares my interests, and I talked to the mayor, particularly with regard to the metro site, about stormwater management. And she encouraged me to speak with Daryl Braithwaite, who actually I'm meeting with tomorrow. I've known Daryl since she and I were activists, clean water activists, many years ago, and I know she still is in a different way. What I'd like to just say to you tonight, though, in a preliminary way, is to suggest there are a number of very important questions that you as a council should begin thinking about. I've got 10 of them, I won't read them all, but I'll just suggest a few. What is the impact of stormwater from Tacoma Park on regional environmental resources, particularly Sligo Creek and the Parkway? What is the impact of our neighbors' stormwater on Tacoma Park and how we work with our neighbors? What's the flood hazard in the community? What's the state of the city's pipeline? When will the cost of repair exceed the cost of replacement, or has it already done so? What are the appropriate technologies? Do you build streets and gutters the same way you did for the last 50 years? Will you try something different? What about green technology? What's the possibility of small land acquisitions to mitigate flooding? These are just some of the questions. I've since talked with the mayor some months ago in attending the seminar, I've been thinking about them a lot, and I'm sure there are other questions as well, but I guess the thing that I hope you'll think about is how do you start a process for answering them, because answering is not necessarily easy. And I guess the real issue is what are you trying to achieve with the stormwater program, and how do you measure your success? So I just, I'm going to pursue these issues with Daryl and with the city engineer, and I hope we have an opportunity to pursue them again with you.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman. I appreciate your bringing this to the council, and I know that these are issues that you have done a lot of thinking about, and I would be very interested to hear how your conversations with the city engineer and the public works director go, because I think you have some good thoughts there.
Good evening, Heather Mazir, 7200 Maple Avenue. Want to thank you for putting the living wage consideration on the work agenda this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to briefly speak in favor of it and the good work that the council is considering. The best part about really good public policy is when we create models of best practices for replication. In large measure, the reason why we were able to get the living wage ordinance through the state this year was looking at the county and other jurisdictions in the state that have already put themselves on the map to say this is a good public interest to provide. And the benefit of Tacoma Park stepping up and doing this is not just for those who are going to be doing business in the city of Tacoma Park, but to once again put our community on the map in the state of Maryland at the municipal level for saying this is a good policy, this is something we'd like to see done across the state. And I wanted to just offer up, as you're going through your deliberations, any of the background information that we used at the state level to make our decisions that could be helpful to you, any of the various experts in the governor's office or in other places in state government that have taken up some of the same considerations that you're going to be looking at and making a decision about Tacoma Park. We'd like to offer up and make those connections for you to answer any questions you have. I've reviewed the great packet of materials that Barb's already pulled together and has some really good best practices and copies of the legislation in there, but just wanted you to know that the state legislative delegation has your back on this, is really appreciate that you're bringing this up in our community and look forward to it moving forward. I'll be watching the work session from repeat cable performance at another time. I have a few more community events I have to go to this evening, but just wanted to come by to offer the District 20 delegation support for your initiatives tonight and hope that you're able to find a way to put Tacoma Park on the map on this important issue.
Thank you, Heather, we appreciate it. And also, you can, you could also watch it as streaming video on your, on the city's website if you would like.
Oh, that's right, absolutely. Thanks for reminding me.
At 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
From anywhere around the world.
Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, and as Lisa mentioned, I'm here to talk about, you know, supporting the impeachment legislation. I was living in Tacoma Park in the wake of 9/11, and I was working with the Justice Action Coalition here in Tacoma Park, the work of which Councilmember Siemens is familiar with. And we were organizing against police brutality in Peachy County. And it took, at the time, it took just a call from a coworker of mine to the FBI saying that I'm an Arab-American that's involved in radical politics for the FBI to call me and intimidate me, intimidate my family. And fortunately, I had a network of media contacts, which I mobilized immediately, and a network of activists, so I wasn't taken in the dark of the night as hundreds of Arab-Americans were taken at that time. Also, on top of that, in my work in organizing, I had, I discovered that two of my, two people that I considered to be friends that I had met in that period turned out to be basically informants. And we, that's something that I had, it took us six months. These are people who came into my home, you know, befriended my family, knew, you know, basically were spying on us the whole time for years, really, before we discovered that they were actually informants. So I think this is like a sampling of what was going on at the time, and I'm one of the lucky ones, again, because I had this extensive support network in terms of media contacts and community activists, but many, many others weren't so lucky. That's my two cents.
Well, thank you for letting us know and sharing that information with us.
Hi, Jim Coon, 41 Oswego Avenue. I would also like to speak in favor of the impeachment resolution. I want to thank Councilmember Sniffer for bringing it forward. And as we've just heard, this is very much a local issue. I was proud to have been involved in 2002 in helping the city council, encouraged the city council to pass a civil liberties resolution opposing the Patriot Act and in support of our status as a sanctuary city. One of the most important functions of local government is to help increase the voice of those residents who feel that their concerns are not being heard in the halls of Congress and at the federal level. Actions taken at the federal level very much have an impact at the local level, not just because we're so close, but across the country, there's a growing chorus of communities that are calling out for impeachment of Bush and Cheney. Very encouraged by Al Wynn signing on to the cosponsor Representative Kucinich's resolution, but we need to encourage the folks who have the power to impeach these criminals that are in office by increasing our voice, passing it here, and adding the voice of Tacoma Park to voices of other municipalities around the country that have called for this. I thank you. I won't be able to be here on the 23rd, and I'm disappointed, but thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak at the public comment period? All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to the city manager's update.
Just a few items this evening. Councilmember Williams had expressed his appreciation to the public works director for her work with trying to get SHA to be responsive on Philadelphia Avenue. I also would like to take the opportunity to thank some of our District 20 representatives. Suzanne Ludlow had contacted some of our representatives to also ask for their assistance in getting SHA to try to address some of the problems before the parade, so I wanted just to note that. Included in your agenda packet this evening, I just wanted to state this for the record, is the IC annual report of the Commission on Landlord and Tenant Affairs. This was something the council had asked, is that each of the city council committees would provide a report either verbally or in writing to the council on an annual basis. I just wanted to enter that into the record. At your place this evening, I've left several documents. One is a punch list for Phase One of the Community Center project. This was something Councilmember Siemens had asked for. Wanted to note that this was basically the report that was transmitted to James F. Knott Construction, the contractor for Phase One, approximately three weeks ago, and was based on the most recent inspection done by the design team. So the items that are reflected were as of May 31st. You'll notice that there's a lot of color coding, and there is a legend to each of the various colors on the very back page, but what you'll see is what items the contractor believed were complete, and the assessment of the design team, as well as some financial information of how those items are valued. I realize I just gave this to you this evening, but if the council has any questions, please contact me during the week, or certainly feel free to ask some questions next week when you've had more of an opportunity to review the report. Also, wanted to just point out that at your place this evening as well is some information on personal digital assistance. As the council is aware, but for the community's benefit, the council had included some funding in the FY08 budget to purchase a PDA for any council member who wanted one, or alternatively, the council member could use those funds for alternative means of communication with his or her constituents. Abel Castillo, who is the city's information technology manager, reviewed the equipment list, the most recent one that we had received tied to the city's contract with Verizon, and tried to pull out those models that seemed to have the functionality that the council members had wanted, which was basically to be able to remotely access their emails with the assistance of the city clerk. We were able today to try to pull some of that information together, to try to provide some detail on each of those models. I would note that some of the devices that were manufactured by Motorola were not provided to you because they're on the prohibited list in accordance with the Nuclear Free Act. If you have questions about any of the technical aspects of any of these devices, if you could please get in touch with Mr. Castillo, and he's probably the best person to answer your questions. He is on vacation this week, but if you send him an email, he is checking those from time to time. The last item I just wanted to mention is that, to let the public know, I think the council's aware of this, is there is a copy of the draft ordinance dealing with the recodification of the rent stabilization ordinance that is available on the city's website. The public hearing is scheduled for next week, so just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that they could take a look at the draft ordinance on the website. And if there's questions about any of the items, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I just wanted to ask you to extend to the staff their commendation on the Coulter Report. I thought it was, it was brief and to the point, and included all the most basic information in a very readable format, so I appreciate that.
I will pass that along, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right. We will now move on to the first of our items, which is an interview for the Safe Roadways Committee, Cheryl Gross Glazer. Do you want to come and sit up at the table here? Do you want to come and sit up at the table here? Welcome.
Thank you.
The council has gotten the information that you've sent us, and I noticed that you do have some previous volunteer experience working on traffic issues. It also seems like you've also had some experience with how difficult they can be to resolve, which is probably a good preparation for the committee. I wonder if you could just talk to us briefly about why you're interested in being on the committee and what you think you can bring to it.
Well, I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for about eight years, and I like to start giving back a little bit. And through my involvement with safe roadways issues on Maple Avenue and at Northwood High School, I felt that I had developed, I would think expertise goes too far, but a little bit of knowledge that I could put to the use of Tacoma Park.
Okay. Now, let's see. You said in your materials that you had worked on the Northwood High School Traffic Committee.
Right.
And that you also succeeded in getting a traffic signal at the entrance to the school.
Well, we've gotten funding for the signal.
Funding for agreements.
Right, and the approval, the actual signal and the road changes, that won't be complete for another couple of years.
Okay. And I think Councilmember Barry can probably talk to you about his own experience with the difference between approval and the signal actually showing up.
My hair was a lot darker before I entered this state.
But it does seem like you've got some very good experience that should be very helpful to the Safe Roadways Committee. And I appreciate your being willing to volunteer. Does anyone else have any other questions for the committee?
Certainly, a question per se. I note that there are already five folks from Ward 1, very active, and a very active ward, and we're happy to have you here. I welcome a sixth person from Ward 1. No one from my ward, I'd like to point that out if anyone's watching on streaming video or cable. Two from Ward 3, one from Ward 5, and one from Ward 6. And all the feedback we've gotten so far from the Safe Roadways Committee has been very city-centric, but just hopeful that you'll watch out for some of the areas that are not represented on the council as well. Looks like you have great qualifications, and I'm happy that you're interested in serving the city and have applied. Looks like you do interesting work as well, so.
Thank you.
I see the theme of watching out for young people in our society like this, so thank you.
I just want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and agreeing on these committees. It's really one of the great things about Tacoma Park, that our citizens will do that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question for the clerk. I was expecting to see the name of one of the people who I thought was still on the committee, not on the committee anymore. Have we had some people drop off of the committee?
Possibly. I'd have to check.
Okay. I was expecting to see Lori Kelly's name there.
It's, I'll have to check.
If you could, I appreciate it.
I think she is.
It could be a mistake, or it could be, there could be some change.
Don't know.
So I'll check.
Okay, thanks.
One of the things that the council decided to do was, when people are reapplying, if they've already been on the committee for a while and they're reapplying, we can go ahead and reappoint them without another interview.
Right.
So it may be that we need to do that with her. Don't scare at the beginning.
This is a warm-up for self-satisfaction that will come later.
You'll love it. I'm sure you will.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much for volunteering.
You're welcome.
We're going to do the appointments, I think, not next week, but I think we've got them scheduled for...
23rd.
The 23rd. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance, this is Darrell's, I think, execution of a contract for construction inspection services. And the Public Works Director, Dale Braithwaite, is going to come up for the next, I think you've got the next three items, don't you?
Thank you. The first one, we have in the past used inspectors on some of our road projects and found it to be a very effective way to both improve the quality of the work, as well as have a quasi-staff person available onsite as the project's going on, so that as neighbors come out of their houses and kind of want to know what's going on, there's a person there that can communicate with them what the project is. And we've just found it a very good way to, very cost-effective way to keep the projects going and enable us to do multiple projects at one time, which sometimes can occur when we have stormwater projects and street projects going on throughout the city. We wanted to put a bid out, we put a proposal out for services of this kind. The city engineer was interested in expanding and kind of exploring other options and some greater qualifications for the inspectors. So he has identified a few more rigorous requirements in the proposal itself. We received four proposals back, two of which he deemed to be non-responsive, folks that just didn't really read the details of what we were asking for. And in our city, as you all know, we have a very high level of need to communicate and a fairly specific level of information that we need to get across. And so those two were not considered, but the two other vendors provided fairly similar pricing. We have a lot of experience with EBA. It's the company that has provided us inspectors before. In discussing the contract award with the city engineer, he thought it might be of best benefit to the city to award the contract to both vendors to enable the city to have the greatest amount of flexibility in selecting inspectors on a as-available basis. It would also increase our pool of inspectors. We tend to get the same person from EBA, which had its benefits. They knew us, and we knew them, but we want to also explore what the prospect from inspector from another company might be. So the... Also can rotate through the inspectors back and forth and, you know, work out the best fit for the city and for the project. So with that in mind, we'd like to move forward. That ordinance that enables us to award contracts to both companies, we have funds available in the operating budget of the city engineer and in the stormwater budget to cover those costs. We roll those project costs, we include inspection services apart as project costs for our major projects. So that's the ordinance that you have, the draft ordinance you have in front of you there first.
Okay. Are there questions with somebody? Would you like to move the ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
Sorry. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions?
I do have a question. How exactly, with no amount given, is a contract awarded?
Well, basically, based on the bid itself, where we had asked them to quote an hourly rate for inspection services and include certain functions in them, like trip time and whatnot, overtime requirements. So basically, we'd be using the proposal as the basis of the contract. And they bid an hourly rate, so that would be what the contract basis would be on a set hourly rate for the hours that the inspector was actually on.
But they won't be guaranteed any minimum amount?
Right, right. It's all project-dependent.
I seem to remember this was, one of these firms was involved in the Laurel Avenue streetscape design, and I believe we shelved their design after lots of contentious meetings and wasted quite a bit of money.
I don't remember if that was EBA or KCI. No, EBA.
Ruben?
Yeah, could you clarify a little bit? One of the issues that comes up that I have a question about is whether they'll have the capacity. How do you do that in the contracting process?
Whether they'll have the capacity to provide us inspectors?
Right.
Well, they're not required to, basically, because we're on, we have them on an as-needed basis. We call them when we need them and say, "We're going to start this project in three weeks. Do you have anybody available?" And they can say yes or no. And if they say no, then we would go to the other firm.
And that's another reason for having to, yes. Thank you.
Will we continue to do the road construction inspections, for example, taking the temperature of the hot asphalt as it poured?
Oh, yeah.
Is that this person's responsibility?
For a resurfacing project, when we have an inspector on a resurfacing project, they do record temperatures of the asphalt trucks once they're being applied to the street.
And what are the other key duties that this individual or individuals would be responsible for?
The biggest part, or the part that interfaces with us the most, is they do all the measuring. They measure each day what was done, you know, the linear feed, a curb and gutter, or how many truckloads and tons of asphalt. They basically keep track on these paperwork forms that they have. And they provide us a way to compare what the contractor is telling us they laid down versus what our inspector is telling us they laid down. And so they basically, the most critical function that they have for us is kind of an accounting function in that they track actual work done on a daily basis. They also provide us daily records. So we have by address which driveway aprons were repaired, what sidewalk was repaired. They give us very specific details on a daily report. So it's as if someone is having a journal of the project as they go along, and we have that. They do it in a three-page, you know, carbonless paper, so we get one, they get one, and then one goes with the invoice. So there's that kind of record-keeping. So those are two very formal things that they'd be doing. As I mentioned before, they're onsite, so they're watching the work. They can flag, not to use a pun, but they can flag traffic problems if they think that the contractor needs to set out a flagman or hasn't. They also make sure that the site is left in good condition with the kind of warning devices that we require. They do a lot of simple things like litter patrol. Sometimes we have a problem with contractors dumping, you know, lunchboxes, cans, bottles on the roadside after they're finished taking their break. So some of it is that kind of policing. And then they're also available as, like I mentioned, residents walk out of their house and say, "What's going on?" Or, "I have another problem." They know how to get in touch with the city engineer, so they can call them out to the site. And they are basically just our eyes and ears on the project. They have a bit of technical knowledge. They're certainly not qualified as an engineer, but they know the way the concrete should be laid, they know how asphalt should be laid, so there's...
And you mentioned that the city engineer was looking for different kinds or better experiences and competencies in this pool of people. What kinds of skills, experiences, and competencies would that include?
Well, it could include something as simple as translation ability, ability to speak Spanish and English. Oftentimes, our contractors tend to have a work crew that doesn't speak English. They usually have a foreman onsite from the contractor that is usually able to speak both languages, but we've had some issues with that, both in terms of residents as well as in terms of contractors. So an ability to navigate language barriers. I also think that the city engineer is looking for slightly higher qualifications in terms of what the inspector's knowledge base is and range of experience is. Some of the actual testing of things could be done. I mean, all the testing we do now is basically pull the temperature reading from the truck, which isn't by any means a technical test, but some inspectors have skills in doing core samples of things. And each of those companies has the ability to evaluate testing of core samples, asphalt samples, base samples. So if the inspector were able to do that onsite, the company could provide the data for us.
And ideally, will have fewer failures of some of the streets that we've sometimes seen in the past.
Yeah, yeah. And that's always the goal, to continue to improve the quality of the product at the end.
Just a corollary question on this. If you could just check and provide some information on the concrete sidewalks that were done on Maple Avenue on the other side of Maple that are all spalled, and let us know whether that's something that's going to be replaced, or whether...
Which unit block? Are you talking about the ones like on Lincoln and Maple?
I'm not su... I know it's between Lincoln and here, and I know it's on the other side. I just don't remember which block, but there were about two blocks' worth of badly spalled concrete.
And between Lincoln and Ritchie, we had a horrendous downfall of rain that happens once right after they pour the concrete, and they came back out and did a surface coat that obviously is not holding up. So we have to work with the contractor and see what they'll do. There's been some other areas where we've received some complaints. I'm thinking of Carroll Avenue and 7100 Block, some issues of driveway aprons. I wouldn't quite call it spalling. It's actually the effect of salt. Unfortunately, when you have fairly new, less than six-month-old concrete, and you have winter, and it gets salt spread on it, it's going to damage the surface of the contract. It doesn't create a failure in the contract, it just doesn't have the attractive surface that you expect on contract otherwise. Our engineer, nor did the contractors view it as defective when it has those salt marks on it. So other than the city paying for the whole cost of removal and replacement, that's the other avenue there. But I know it does raise concerns for folks after you have a winter and you see those salt marks on the surface.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? All right. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional council comments? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? This is a single reading ordinance because the funding for it is provided in the city budget. All right. If there's no public comments, the ordinance is before the council. Since it's a single reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye. The single reading ordinance passes. The next item is another single reading ordinance regarding repairs to Mississippi Avenue.
Yeah, I first need to start off with that correction in the title. It has, listed here as Compton Branch, and it should have been Comstock Branch, so my apologies.
Okay.
A sharp eye in the community, pointed that out to me this afternoon. We have a situation on the banks of Comstock Branch off of Mississippi Avenue where the erosion is occurring at a fairly rapidly increasing rate along the side of a section of road. It's got the possibility of undermining the street. More importantly, it's creating sediment and erosion pollution for the waterway itself. The solution is to shore up the shoreline, basically with engineered stone and riprap to rebuild in layers the side of the fairly steep slope that now goes down to the Comstock Branch Creek. So this contract would enable us to get those repairs put in place. The city engineer's been working on this project for a while. It requires state permit because we're working in a state right-of-way, and also, or a waterway. It also required Park and Planning's understanding, approval, and blessing of the project. We've had a lot of help from Park and Planning. Andy Frank's been extremely helpful to us on this project, and in fact, connected us with the contractor who's going to be able to do the work. We're going to be participating in a contract award that was provided by Montgomery County for streambank improvements and erosion control measures. We had a very difficult time finding any contractor who wanted to come anywhere near this project or had the skill level and ability to do it. Anytime you're working around waterways, it creates a whole new range of environmental controls. This company comes very highly recommended. The county has awarded them a contract. Park and Planning has also used them on a number of projects around the different waterways that they manage. So this contract would be to using the terms and conditions of the Montgomery County contract, get them in here to undertake that project along Mississippi Avenue. It would be anticipated that the work would start as soon as possible. We've gotten tentative approval from the state. We've had the state out to look at the site and look at our plans and talk to the contractor, and they indicated that they would provide us a permit. The state has some notice requirements that we have to go through, fairly formal notice process that has to be delivered both to the city side as well as outside the city on the state's letterhead notice. So those efforts will be underway once we can sign the contract with the vendor.
Karen?
Thank you. Ruben, since that's your ward, you want to get first?
Yeah, I do want to move it, actually.
Okay. Go ahead and move it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I had a question. You know, that area is pretty natural, and of course, that's part of what causes the problems is...
Mm-hmm.
And I know the residents along there are interested in keeping it natural, although they don't want the road to cave in. Can you give us some idea of what kind of work is going to be done?
Yeah, they will be creating an artificial streambank. So in that way, it will not look natural, although it'll be made out of stone, but it won't be naturally occurring stone, nor will it be as organized and stacked up as it's going to look. It's basically going to be like a set of Lego blocks that rebuild the slope. basically gonna be like a set of Lego blocks that rebuild the slope. Um, so there, it won't be a naturally looking area. When you're there, you'll know that that was a man-made, uh, construction. One of the things that, um, it won't impact is that, uh, from that area, that section where it's failing, it is a very steep slope, almost basically straight down from the road surface. So it's not something that you see from your house, uh, from either side. Uh, it's just such a, a straight slope down. It's probably ten or twelve feet drop to the, to the base level of the, uh, area where the waterway comes through. The water itself, this path of the water, is several feet away from the actual end of the, end of the bank.
Can you give an indication along the shoulder of the road, uh, what distance?
It'll cover a space of probably, my recollection is about, uh, twelve to fifteen feet wide. Uh, the section actually has, um, there must've been some problem there when the road was, um, first poured, because there is a, um, there's not a handrail, but there's a sort of a guard rail and a concrete slab underneath it that's actually peeling away and falling down into the, um, into the bank itself. So it's at that section. It's pretty much gonna span that section of reinforced concrete where the rail is now. So I believe that's, it might be as much as sixteen feet.
Now, I know there's some similar issues all the way along that, uh, piece of road. Are you planning to do anything else in that area?
There's nothing else planned at this point, just that area right there, um, that impacts the roadway. It's a, um, along that area, it's a very fine line between what's Park and Planning property and what's city property, because this is right along the edge of the street. It was deemed to be city property. We initially thought that it was gonna be more Park and Planning's problem than ours, but, uh, after a look at the property boundaries, it was identified to be the city's. So a lot of the areas in that Compton Branch area in particular, really Park and Planning...
You feel comfortable we can't get them to pay for permits?
No. Fairly comfortable at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We have had some success in the past with cost-sharing with, uh, Park and Planning. Uh, when we had a stormline collapse in there, uh, that went under Sliga Creek Parkway, they did agree on a cost share there. So we've had some successes, uh, but in this case, um, they're, they're very clear. Uh, we have certainly got...
Mississippi is ours?
Yeah, Mississippi is ours. Uh, we have gotten, uh, invaluable assistance from Park and Planning staff. Uh, Andy Frank has been a, uh, real, uh, real critical, um, partner in terms of the solution for this. So in that way, Park and Planning has contributed.
Ruben?
Um, yeah, a quick question. On the, um, anticipated start date this summer?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're already in July. When, when, um, I don't...
As soon as we get the formal, uh, permit from the state. Um, it's kinda been a little bit of chicken and egg. They're waiting for us to say we have a contract award.
Oh, I see.
So, you know, it's just sort of, we've got all the, all the pieces sitting there together in the room. We just need to... And then, of course, Highway and Safety, the company that we're, uh, recommending the contract award to, knows that it's been planned, but if, you know, how fast they can mobilize and do this project will can, depend on where else they've been pulled in the last three weeks since we last talked to them.
Have there, uh, do you have any experience with how long it takes to get, uh, the permits and so on?
The permits take forever, uh, but we've started this process months ago. Um, so we're very close to getting the permit. We've got all the paperwork in, the state person's been out. Um, they're going to, they are streamlining the permit process by calling it an, an emergency or urgent situation. Um, so it's not a routine maintenance. It's a, it's a, you know, urgent maintenance, uh, emergency maintenance project. So it's got a special kind of permit. Uh, the length of time themselves, they didn't think it would take any more than two weeks to, uh, complete the project, so they plan to move in there fairly quickly. The biggest piece of equipment, as I understand it, is they'll be using ti-, uh, some skid steer type of equipment that'll have to go enter into the stream from below and, and ride up.
Um, I noticed that, um, the, the cost of the project is, um, forty-three thousand dollars, and this is a single reading ordinance. Did, I don't remember seeing it in the budget. Was it in the budget and I just missed it?
Uh, well, it was, it's, uh, if, it's in the stormwater budget in fiscal year '08. Um, you know, we have both capital as well as subcontractor funds, uh, so we'll be able to do it out of those monies. Basically, there's a number of projects that are sort of in the queue. This project has taken precedence, so it's kinda hopped.
Okay, so that's just, it's just using up that category of funding. All right. Additional questions? Okay, the, um, item has been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye. The ordinance passes. And the third one in this group is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a replacement leaf vacuum.
This is a fairly standard replacement. Uh, we keep our leaf vacs for ten years, and we have six of them. So, for six years in a row, we replace them, then we have a few years in between, and then we start back up in the schedule again. This is, um, uh, replacing a vacuum that has, uh, exceeded its useful life, needs to be replaced and repaired. Um, it, it's, uh, it makes a huge, uh, impact on the collection itself when we have new equipment out in the field, and so, um, staff is looking forward to, uh, breaking this one in, in the fall. Um, our experience from last year is that it can take, uh, almost four or five months to get the equipment in place, which is why we've kinda jumped at the gate here to, uh, replace the leaf vac, so we have it in time for the November collection. This is a sole-source award. I've had the opportunity to have all different kinds of purchases tonight. Um, Old Dominion Brush has been designated a sole-source supplier of this piece of equipment. Um, this is the piece of equipment that the city uses as its leaf collection vacuum. Um, and we've worked with the company since nineteen ninety-nine, or actually way before that, but it's been designated as a sole-source, um, machine since nineteen ninety-nine.
And I imagine since we have several of them, having them interchangeable is important.
Do you have to move the ordinance?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any council questions on the ordinance? Council comments? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye. The ordinance for purchasing the leaf vacuum passes also. Thank you, Dale. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, the next item on our agenda is an update on the film festival, and I think we have Jim Kuhn, and do we have Agnes Moon here also? Yes?
Steve Menchur.
And Steve, you're welcome also. Why don't you sit up here? Yeah. And, uh, Jim had contacted me and said that he wanted to come before the council and, uh, talk to us about some issues with the film festival, give us an update, and, uh, asked if we could schedule it before the council went on recess, and we shoehorned you into this evening.
Thanks so much. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about, uh, about our activities in the past. We're bringing you up to date. Um, as you can see from the, uh, update that you have here, um, plans are well underway. Uh, submissions are, are, have been called, and we prepared for the first time a submission form in Spanish. Uh, some submissions are...
It's a second time.
Thank you. Uh, we've set a date for the festival. It's, uh, the weekend before Thanksgiving. Uh, we put out a call for volunteers and had some response, and we've had a new feature added this year. I'd like to have Agnes, uh, fill us in on some of the, uh, some of the, uh...
What we've been up to?
Thank you, yeah, the past year.
Um, I was hired as film festival director about thirteen months ago, and I have a list of some of the things that I've accomplished and that the festival has, has accomplished. Last year, we were awarded a Arts and Communities Grant from the Maryland State's Arts Council for seven hundred and fifty dollars. This fiscal year, we've been awarded two thousand dollars from the Freeman Foundation, one thousand dollars from the Tacoma Foundation, and five thousand dollars from the Montgomery County Arts and Humanities Council. Last year, we celebrated Home Movie Day for the first day with historic Tacoma. We partnered with local businesses for support, including Mark's Kitchen and several wheeltors. We participated in the Street Festival and the Folk Festival. We circulated a call for entries in Spanish last year. We hosted a free screening of work by the award-winning filmmaker Bill Brown on the subject of the US-Mexico border and immigration, and we printed and sold T-shirts as a fundraising tool. And at the festival itself last year, we awarded prizes for the first time. Those prizes were all donated by local businesses. We screened work on film for the first time. We hosted a panel discussion on the urban environment featuring Joy Austin Lane, Friends of Tacoma Transit, the Gandhi Brigade, and a representative from the Washington Area Bicycle Association. We hosted an opening night reception and a kids' reception. We hosted a free auxiliary, auxiliary screening of our opening night feature at Sanga with a, an appearance by a representative of the Chesapeake Climate Action Network, and we hosted celebrity guests George Pelikanos and James Grady. So some of our goals for this year are increasing attendance, increasing outreach to minority communities, to continue to build relationships with local nonprofits and community organizations, to hopefully host outdoor screenings here at the community center, and to screen work on a cable channel.
So we're, uh, we're proud and pleased of, of the, uh, the support that we've had from, from granting agencies as well as Agnes's successes in, in leading us. We also wanna thank the council and the Arts and Humanities Commission for helping to, um, lead a, conduct a round of interviews for a new director about eighteen months ago. Uh, that was a valuable way to infuse the film festival with some new energy and some new ideas. And, uh, so we're actively seeking a director's salary, um, to replace the one-time only city council honorarium that was approved, I guess, two years ago now. Uh, we all recognize the importance of strong leadership in artistic festivals, especially those largely run by volunteers, and we think it should be fairly compensated. At the same time, we've been very successful in raising funds, and we, we are grateful to, um, the local organizations that have helped contribute. Uh, but we'd like to have as much of that funding as possible go towards the programming and towards the support of the festival itself. Uh, so we are, um, hoping that the council might support a resolution affirming what the committee has already agreed to, and Agnes has agreed to, which is a three-year term for the director, the current director. Um, and, uh, we had a very, uh, encouraging meeting, I guess I would say, with the Arts and Humanities Com- uh, Commission towards the end of last month, uh, with a request for some funding. Um, we were favorably received, but I think the, uh, issue here is that they've got some, some things, some very worthy causes that they're supporting, and we don't want, uh, support for the film festival to detract from the activities that are currently going on and being supported by the Arts and Humanities Council. So we would, we would come and ask for support here from the council for the Arts and Humanities Commission to continue to support the film festival. A couple other things I'd like to say, uh, before, I also like to hear from Steve, but, um, one, one issue that came up last year was, uh, we were charged over eight hundred dollars for staffing to keep the community center open after hours during the hours that the, that the film festival, uh, was going on. Um, after discussing this with, uh, with Ellen Arnold Robbins, who supplied some of that staffing, she actually stepped forward and covered some of that. But the eight hundred dollars, over eight hundred dollars that we were charged, uh, came to almost half of what the council had approved for the honorarium for the director. Um, and, um, I, we, this was unexpected. Uh, the, uh, the city employees did a great job for us. We're very appreciative of the help that they provided, uh, over that weekend. Uh, I should also say that we were good citizens. We cleaned up after ourselves. We left everything the way it was, uh, put the tables away, um, got out of here by ten every night. Um, so, uh, and, you know, given the long support that the city has provided to festivals, uh, we would hope that in the future, uh, covering of staffing for keeping the community center open for the festival might be covered as an in-kind contribution. Uh, so, uh, that's, that's one, one issue that I was, I was hoping to, to bring to your attention. Uh, again, city employees deserve to be compensated for the time that they put in. That's not an issue. Uh, they were here, and we appreciated their help. Uh, but it was, it was a lot of money out of a, out of a, a fairly small budget. Steve is with us. He's a, a longtime, uh, volunteer with the film festival. I just, I was hoping you'd say something about the industry.
Sure. I just, uh, came for, you know, to represent some of the other members of the committee and to thank you so much for your continued support for the film festival. We think it's becoming an established event on the calendar, uh, of the, of Tacoma Park and its cultural activities, and we'd like it to continue to be so. We were proud and pleased to, to be able to offer Agnes a position with us, and she has been fantastic this year in raising the money, uh, to keep the film festival going. And so, we have been hoping that through the various devices that, that the council has, uh, available to it, to be able to put back some, uh, financial support, uh, into our ongoing, uh, festival. We, we have the, the kids who are very excited each year to be able to take part. The, the media community in Tacoma Park and the arts community in Tacoma Park has stepped up to take part in this festival every year. And so, again, I'm just representing some of the other volunteers to thank you and to hope for your ongoing commitment and support.
Okay. Um, can I just get a clarification? I understand the request for the provision of the staffing, you know, necessary during the festival. Was there, was there something specific in addition that you were asking for?
Well, um, we, uh, we actually approached the Arts and Humanities, uh, Commission specifically to request funding from them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to, uh, establish a salary, an annual salary for the director that would be matched, uh, by funds raised by, uh, the, by Agnes and the, and the film festival, um, but also matched in part by, uh, by funds from the Arts and Humanities Commission. Uh, we were hoping to provide a salary, uh, for the director that could, could be four thousand dollars a year, two thousand from the monies that we've raised, and two thousand dollars from the Arts and Humanities Commission. Now, when we approached them, we were hoping that we might get a thousand dollars from one fiscal year, which just ended, and a thousand dollars from another fiscal year, just about to begin. Um, uh, and, uh, that said, I mean, that the, the, the issue, uh, that is, uh, important to recognize is that they have been very supportive of many festivals throughout the city financially, in important ways, but not yet this one. We've, we've, they've provided very helpful support in, uh, conducting a round of interviews. It's been a successful round of interviews. Uh, the honorarium was very, uh, helpful from the city, the one-time honorarium, two, I guess, two years ago now. Um, but, but we've proven some success, and we wanna carry it forward, and, uh, so we're, we're, um, hoping to do that in a way that doesn't rot Peter or pay Paul.
So you're looking for additional funding, uh, from the council to match the funding?
If at all possible, sure.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Joy?
Um, just a couple of things that, uh, I, I wanted to emphasize. I've found out just a week or so ago that, um, that the grant agent, granting agencies had, um, had come through on many of the things that Agnes has applied for. Um, I, I'm really impressed with the eight thousand dollars so far, and I assume that, um, uh, that there's many more agencies out there. Um, I would like to see the city continue to support this as the, the two thousand dollars that we have invested in hiring the director, um, two years ago has now resulted in, uh, not just the eight thousand dollars this year, but previously the seven hundred and fifty and the, the T-shirt sales and contributions, which I think you said, um, totaled about a thousand dollars?
And, and the extra money was from the Tacoma Foundation last year, which was fabulous.
Oh, right. Right, so, um, it, it's, it's just really a terrific indicator of what the city has done to leverage money from other, um, entities. And, uh, and I can't thank you all enough, because I know that that goes, uh, that only happens with incredibly hard work. And, um, certainly, the two thousand dollars hasn't compensated anyone for the hours they spent on this, but, um, it's a wonderful, uh, uh, way of, of featuring the creativity in our community, um, of highlighting, um, for kids and up-and-coming filmmakers a venue that, um, uh, that they can feel proud of. And I really like what, what you all have done with it, um, and I, I definitely want to see this continue. I think the, the city council, uh, does need to take up the issue of, um, appointing a film festival director. Uh, we've done that with the Poet Laureate, um, twice now, and, uh, and certainly the film festival is no different. Um, the, the issue of city support, I know in the budget that we are now operating under, there's a five thousand dollar pot of money that can, um, go towards nonprofit support. Uh, I would think the two thousand dollars would come from that. And, um, and finally, the staffing and facility expenses. Um, I would appreciate Barb looking at, um, what her best guess is of, um, of what the film festival costs the city so that we can better budget for, for that. costs the city so that we can better budget for, for that. I would hate to see the, the grant money have to be spent on that when really we could be doing some of the, the marketing and the targeting and featuring some of the great talent here as well as people we can attract here. And then I saw on this blue sheet that there had been a date set, but I know that in the past, there's been some variability in when the film festival is held, and I would hope that, that you and other experts that you consult about running festivals would, would decide the best time of year to increase your audience and, you know, the time span over which you want to hold your events. So I would certainly leave that up to you all.
Yep. Okay. Well, I would definitely support the funding for the staffing of the community center. We do that for other organizations that we, we provide in-kind support to. I think that's, that's fine. I would agree that I think we set up this process this year for organizations who are looking for funding, and it's a small pot of money at the moment, but I would, I would ask for money from that first. And then the last one is a question, what kinds of things would you anticipate seeing in a displeasure series?
Well, I wrote a, well, I'll explain my thinking behind that. I'm a filmmaker, and my experience lately as a filmmaker is that festivals definitely have, there's little, it seems to be little interest for challenging work that maybe work that's not immediately comprehensible or engaging or gratifying is not as interesting to curators and viewers anymore. And I think this could be related to things like YouTube or TiVo, people's demand for immediate gratification and immediate engagement. I thought one thing we could do to distinguish ourselves from other festivals that just show whatever people throw at them is to come up with an interesting curatorial concept that speaks to cultural issues that are going on. So I had, in my little call for entries, I named some films that I thought might be examples of traditions in filmmaking that speak to this issue that maybe aren't represented by current media that's being screened at festivals. So for example, structuralist work or political work from the seventies, things coming out of what's called political modernism, if you're a film theorist, or even cinema.
No, but I went to UC, UC Santa Cruz with many film theorists.
Okay. But even like work by Frederick Wisniewski that you might see on PBS.
Okay.
To some degree, I question whether contemporary audiences are, are encouraged or taught to appreciate that sort of work. So that's one of the ideas motivating this.
Okay, great.
And just to let you, there'll be lots of pleasure at the festival as well as displeasure, but the idea that, you know, challenging work would find a home in Tacoma Park, I think, is probably interesting to us all.
Sure, just checking.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would also support the idea that the city provided an in-kind contribution, the staffing necessary to keep the community center open after hours. We have, on occasion, provided city facilities gratis to other good causes, and I think you all certainly fall into that category. I know we've done, done a number of voter education things, and we've done it on some other things, and I, I would think that the film festival would fall into that. The, the money that was set aside for nonprofits and festivals, I think the council does need to, to consider how we go about dealing with requests for that. We set it aside, but we didn't really set a process per se, and I know that we've had requests in the past from the Jazz Fest and from the House and Garden Tour. At some point, I think we do need to give you guys more of a, of a specific process of this is, this is how we're going to go about deciding it. We've gotten as far as setting the money aside, but we haven't really set up the process yet, and I think we do need to do that. And I don't think we're going to manage to do it prior to the council's recess, but we will do it as soon thereafter as we can sort of manage to do it. But I would just see if the council, what the council's sense right now is on the other one, which I think doesn't need a, a process, the request for in-kind contribution, essentially the staffing for keeping the community center open late to accommodate the film festival.
Done.
Done.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing yeses, so I think we can ask if the city manager can make that happen, and then we can take up the other, I'm glad to know that you're interested in, in some of that other funding, and we will, we will go ahead and pull together a process that we can act on for your requests as well as some of the other ones that we've had.
That's fabulous, and let us know how we can help support you to, to make that pot larger. We will.
Yes, I, I think the notion was the first year, since we didn't really know what we were doing, we were going to start small and then get bigger as we sort of understood both what we were doing and what, what kinds of organizations out there there were that would be interested.
And if I can just get a sense from you all, I think as we go forward and set up that process, we may follow some of the examples of some of the other local governments that do this. We had, I think, at least two examples when we discussed it, and I believe both of them ended up with like an annual, you know, call for entries to see what there might be. So if we set up some similar process like that, I would imagine that that timeframe might take, take it past the point where you do this year's festival for a resolution for whatever we might do. Does that in any way cause difficulties that, you know, like if we were to provide something that was, you know, explospecto?
Will you guys have a better idea of the budget this year? Can we get through this festival this year?
Well, some of the grants we've been awarded this year prohibit us from applying for the next year, so you would be filling a gap, in effect, if you gave us money for next year rather than this year.
Okay, good.
It works. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate you coming and, and letting us know all the interesting things you're doing. Thank you. The council will now take a brief recess and come back for the remainder of our work session items.[1048.30]
The city attorney who is here to, I guess, talk to us in more depth about this legal issue. Right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
First, what I want to say is the idea of making a decision about what to do right now for the next council term is certainly appropriate to be on the agenda. The only question is the part that makes this a multi-year kind of plan and suggests that there can be a change in the middle of a term. And I think both of those things are not possible under the way our charter is written. And just so you know, just for your information, that kind of provision that we have in our charter is also in state law. It doesn't affect municipalities, but it's the same concept. And it also exists in almost every charter that I know of from municipalities. So there's nothing unique about it. But it seems to me that it says very clearly that the change can only take effect for the next term, and it must be voted on by this council for the next council, that no change can occur during the council's term, and that it can't be self-enforcing. It has to be a council action each time. It can't be that you set up something that's multiple years. It has to be set up each term. It has to be at the end of the previous term to take effect at the next term. So the fix that I -- I have two different suggestions of a way to deal with this charter concern. And either is good. One would be to simply remand your concern about this multiple year and change procedure back to the committee that gave you its recommendation and say, okay, we think there are problems with the charter. Please do this differently, given your initial goals and objectives, but do it pursuant to the charter. And my guess is there'll be other instructions and other conceptualizations that this council will want to also send back to the committee so that it can benefit from your thoughts before it recommends again. So one idea is a remand. The second idea, it seems to me, would be just as good, and that is to both adopt this particular year's compensation scheme, whatever your thoughts are on that, and that ad language that says that the committee should every term report back with a recommendation so that the council will consider salary changes at the end of every term for the next term. The idea being that you're respecting their concern that there was too much of a hiatus over the last many years, and so things got out of market and out of control. And instead, you're going to set up a very periodic review, and that'll just be a council procedure, and you're sure that you'll entertain that every two years toward the end of the term to set it up for the next term. I think that would be fine, and it would be taking advantage of the committee's recommendation about the need for looking forward over the next years, but it wouldn't have the problem of taking it out of the council's control and setting it up procedurally in a way that offends the charter.
Can I clarify a couple of things? First of all, my understanding is that you're saying that we can set an ordinance, that we can pass an ordinance setting salaries for the next council, but it has to be the same amount through the entire term of the next council.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So we can't change it in the middle of the council's term?
Yes.
And the other thing that you're saying is you're saying that we can't pass an ordinance that skips the next council and doesn't take effect till the following council, so we can't, we cannot at this time legislate the third year of increase?
That's right.
Okay.
I think our charter is very specific as to that limitation.
Can I just get a clarification? You said skip the next one, and you're saying that we can't set one for the next, we can't set one for the council term starting this November, and then in addition, say that there's a change for the following one two years later?
That's right.
We can't do that.
Right.
But we can set it for next term, and it would carry over to the term.
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, the ordinance would remain in effect until changed, definitely.
And if I could just clarify your suggestion, your second suggestion, it's that we set, we establish an ordinance setting the salary for the next term, and that we also put a provision into law recommending that the next council institute a salary review at the end of that term also. That's what you're suggesting?
Yes, and one way to also implement that is your current ordinance setting up the committee just says that it's a four-year committee, that people are appointed for four-year terms. It could also say, and it will report back its recommendations at the end of every term.
Every two years. Okay, gotcha. I understand that. Okay. Are there other questions from the council? Yeah?
Obviously, I'm not an attorney, but it seems to me that one could reasonably construe that setting the salary in stages would simply be setting an annual, an annual salary. But rather than kind of bouncing back to the council members, the other thing we could do is just average the 2007, 2008 salary and be done with it. So I'll just throw that out there. Joy?
I want to point to what the committee did do, and since I've had a chance to review their report more thoroughly now and kind of think about this phasing in that they were proposing over four years, I would affirm the amount that they achieved. And so if you look at the November 2010 amounts, you know, it's not what I originally suggested, which was tripling the current salaries, but I do think that the committee's work was clear on this, and that was that they wanted a phasing in of something that got closer to what the job warranted, and that was after comparing it to other jurisdictions and after surveying all of us to find out the number of hours that we spent on our duties. I realize that, you know, different wards require different things, and different council members can provide different services, so it is important that it be something uniform across wards. And, but I do think that where the committee ended up was close to doubling the council salaries, and that's what I propose we should do for this next term.
Ruben?
Well, I appreciate the amount of effort that it takes to be a council member, and in the grand scheme of things, I agree with Councilmember Austin Lane that a salary, something on the order of what a part-time job would pay, makes a lot of sense. I think that, given where we are now, one, which is quite far from that, two, that the rest of the budget is basically been increased more or less for inflation, a very small amount of real new things that we have told the landlords that they can get rent increases of 100% of the CPI, basically inflation, and other actions like that in the budget. I really don't see how we can justify giving ourselves, many of us will be on this council again, an enormous increase all at once. I do appreciate the idea of moving towards a comparable pay that other cities pay their council members, but I can't see doing it all in one jump. So to me, I can imagine doing a kind of 5% a year concept, which would be greater than inflation, would get us at some point in the future to that point of being on a par with other cities, but I can't see justifying to my constituents a very large jump.
Can I just say something in response, since he mentioned my comments? I think the total amount that we're talking here is between $10,000 and $30,000 a year. So when you think of any, any increase that's being proposed here, whether it be what the committee proposed for 2007 or 2010, it is $10,000 to $30,000, which is a drop in the bucket. And I believe that the public has been looking to us to do the sensible thing.
Okay, and that $10,000 to $30,000 a year you're talking about in total, not per council member, right?
No, that would be the increase.
Okay.
Over what's budgeted now.
Right. My recollection of the, of the committee testimony when they came in here last week was a strong encouragement that, or a feeling that the, and they were reluctant to use the word compensation, but the money paid to council members, in some ways, because it's so low, the committee felt that it inhibited the number of people who really ran for this council, and especially the low-income residents who depend on their jobs just to get their families by from month to month, that they really need to work at something to provide some income. And although none of these pays that are itemized here over the next four years the way they had it scheduled, brings it to a level that is equivalent in many ways to a part-time job, it does, and again, I remember the words, the council member, or the committee members, that it does provide at least a level of income that allows someone to spend the time and actually still be able to provide for their family. So with their normal full-time job, they wouldn't have to work the other part-time job. They could, their part-time job could be as a council member, and that this level of pay would be enough to, basically to encourage more low-income residents of the city to participate as council members. I will admit that that was a position that I advocated several year, four years ago, when I was on the council compensation committee. I was not on the council at that time. It may have been more than four years, I haven't figured this out exactly right, but the last council compensation committee, it's a position that I agree with, and so that's a long way to come around and say I support Councilmember Austin Lane's suggestion.
Please.
And if I can just give a little different perspective on a point that Councilmember Snapper made about kind of inflation and cost of living, one of the things that the council did in changing the method by which compensation is adjusted for city employees was to go to a more market-based system. And I think the, the committee's recommendation, in many ways, they were, they were talking about COLAs, but I think what they really were talking about was market adjustments. And I think their recommendation and I think their recommendation moves in that direction. And I'm comfortable with doing something that is more in line with Councilmember Austin Lane's recommendation. If we don't want to go that far, I could at least see going toward the committee's recommendation for the November 2010 levels, given that we were constrained from doing kind of a step to get there, that would at least get things there and get them set for the next round around on that.
Go ahead.
If other people are willing to support Councilmember Austin Lane's recommendations, I'm happy to support that as well.
I want to raise also the concern that Councilmember Snipper raised. I think that there is an issue of appearances here. Councilmember Snipper is correct that not, maybe not all of us, but probably most of us will be here after this, after the election, and will be receiving the raises that we're talking about. And even the first, the first increase, the one that they recommended for the first year is a 25% increase over what the council now receives, and the, I haven't done the, done the increase, but I think that the 2010 recommendation is more than a 50% increase over what the council currently receives. And I, you know, I understand the concern, and I understand the issue of trying to make it possible for low-income people. I'm not sure that even that will do it, but it just, I just, I don't think I can stomach making a case for a 50% increase over what the council is currently receiving. And I would, the recommendation that I would make would be to put in place the November 2007 increase, and then leave it up to the next council compensation committee to recommend for November 2009 what they think would be the appropriate increase. Yep.
On that issue, I, I believe the, the original committee that was, that Councilmember Seaman served on, did do the council a favor by setting up a schedule by which this was reviewed. One thing that I've seen is that it took that committee, as well as our current committee, a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of staff resources to review the issue and to arrive at a decision. So I, I can't say that I want to see that happen every two years. The every-four-year schedule that was set out makes sense because of the burden that it places on the, on the city staff to undertake, as well as on city residents who are willing to serve in that capacity. And for that reason, I think going to their suggestion and ending up somewhere close to double our current salaries, and yes, that would be a, be a 100% increase, Mayor Porter, that would be, in my view, the best way to honor what they have reviewed and now suggested to us without having this issue come back to the city in two years.
I think that perhaps the way to deal with this is just see where members of the council want to come out. I have heard people speak to various things. The proposal that I would support would be to go to the November 2007 level, and put that in the ordinance, and then I recommend that the committee come back in two years. And I understand Councilmember Austin Lane has put on the table the recommendation that we go to the 2010. Is that your recommendation?
No, my recommendation is for a nice even number that is easy to communicate, and so I don't see that in, in that amount. But if you round up a little bit, it would be double what we make now, which is, right now, we're making $6,000, the mayor makes $8,000, and so my proposal is for $12,000 for council members and $16,000 for the mayor.
All right, so there's two proposals. There could be more than two.
No, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that, right now, based on the committee's work, I believe it was calculated that council members are making a little over $4 an hour based on the workloads that people said they did. So when we're talking about a 50% increase, we're still talking about around $6 an hour, which I don't think is out of line for the, for the type of work that we do. And I just second Councilmember Austin Lane's proposal.
Where do other people sit on this? Mine? Okay.
I'm sorry, you like, what did you say?
I like the, going with the 2007 number and coming back in two years.
Okay, I think we've got two for each one at this point.
And I had indicated that I could support Councilmember Austin Lane's proposal, and as a kind of a fallback from that, going to the November 2010 figures rounded.
Okay, so you're basically supporting Councilmember Austin Lane, yes?
If, if there are three other votes for 16 and 12, I would support that. I would also support the 2010 figure, but I wouldn't support four years of the 2007 figure.
And I, and Ruben? Okay, so it looks like the doubling the council salary is the one that hit, by a four to three majority, so if the, if the, if the staff will write it up that way, we'll see what we have with a, when we go ahead and vote on it.
Do you know when you'll be bringing this back?
I think it's scheduled for week after next.
Well, I would be out of town then, so I'd appreciate if you'd schedule it when I'm in town.
Then we'd have a 3-3 vote.
I don't think we have time to schedule it next week.
I'll be out of town, and it would be a 3-3 vote.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the rush in, in bringing this back to the council if the council is comfortable with the direction things are going. I would think that bringing it back in September would make sense.
That will leave people who are interested in running for office unsure of where the council is going to come out on salaries. The, the idea of doing this on the schedule that we did was to give people who might be interested in running for council seat or for the mayor's office to know what those, what those positions would pay prior to them going, beginning to plan their campaigns.
When's the nominating caucus?
The nominating caucus is the, is the end of September, early October.
October 2nd.
It's five weeks before the election, but most people who are running pull together their campaigns prior to that point, and I wanted to give them as much advance notice as possible.
I think this meeting should have given them a pretty good indication of how things are going.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure a four to three vote would, if I were a candidate, would give me much comfort level.
I would move that we, we table this item until the first meeting in September.
It's a work session, we don't have to do it.
Yeah, right, we don't have to table it. If the council wishes to do that, we certainly can. Is that what the council wishes to do? Yeah. Okay. All right, well, we will then not take this up until September. All right, thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. And I, and I, and I'm assuming that we're also going with Councilmember, the second part of Councilmember Austin Lane's recommendation, which is that the committee come back in four years rather than two. I assume that that was the, okay. All right. Thank you, Sue. I appreciate it. The next item is the discussion of the policy on contractual labor and full-time versus part-time employees. Barb, did you want to start us off with a?
Sure. This was an issue that arose during the budget process for FY08, and the council had a discussion on June 11th to talk about this issue. Specifically, it was related to the city's use of part-time employees, particularly those that are not receiving benefits, as well as contractual labor. At that time, the council made a decision to increase the hours for the coordinator of senior recreation programs primarily because the position was vacant at that time, and we were going to begin the recruitment process. But because we were so far along in the budget process, the council deferred any discussion on this matter, and that's the purpose of tonight's discussion, which was to have some further discussions about the issue and whether or not the council wished to adopt some type of formal policy. Included in your agenda packet is sort of a recap of the information that staff had presented about a month ago. I did want to note that the information has changed somewhat. I did include this time around some information on the communications office. Quite frankly, we were pulling this together rather quickly, and much of the council's discussion at that time had focused on public works and recreation primarily. It occurred to me when this issue was coming back up that the council may wish to have some information about how we're using contractual labor, which is generally more professional services, and the part-time staff in the communications office, because as some information indicates, Ms. Moffitt Schopf uses part-time employees quite extensively for events such as covering tonight's meeting, special events such as the Independence Day Parade. So certainly would be happy to answer any questions the council may have about the information included in the packet. I think staff is just looking for some direction from the council as to whether or not you wish to adopt some type of formal policy.
Terry.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb, for preparing this information, expanding it from what we had at budget time. Certainly, my interest in raising this question is that the city not use, not limit employees to part-time just so we can avoid paying for benefits. It's a difficult thing to, to sit here on the council and know to what extent that we do that. We are, to some degree, have to trust your judgment and the managers that work for you that they're not doing that, or to what extent that they are. I, I look at the communications area and the fact that we have, you know, people who come here and do camera work and sound work, that isn't something that's a normal eight-hour-a-day type of work in this city. And so I can certainly understand having part-time staff to do that. But if, in fact, we have multiple camera people that we use just so that we can limit the hours of any one individual to less than 20 hours, solely so that we can avoid paying for benefits, then I think that is repugnant, and I think that we shouldn't be doing that. I think of the, a city policy that council has in the past said that we don't want to do that. I just have not felt comfortable in, especially in the recreation department, that we're doing that. I've heard a number of times where employees, that there was work for employees to do, but that they were not able to take on the extra hours because it would put them into the, over the nineteen and a half hours, and cause them to, cause the city to have to pay benefits. So that's kind of where this comes from, and I don't know that, that the council can sit here with the information that you've provided and say, you know, we are limiting the benefits, limiting the hours so that we don't have to pay benefits or not. I guess the first question is, is are we, are we really required to pay benefits if we have people work 20 hours or more? And question number two is, do we limit people's hours so that we don't have to pay benefits?
Mr. Hobbs may be able to help me out, because he's a little bit more familiar with the union contract, but there's really a couple of things at play here. Certainly, department heads are assigned a certain number of FTEs. That's information that is presented to the council as part of the budget process, and that's certainly something the staff takes seriously in terms of abiding by the information that we present to the council. There is a provision in the union contract, Mr. Hobbs maybe elaborate, want to elaborate on that, but it does indicate that, Wayne, why don't you, you have to see better than I can.
Well, basically, if an employee is working 20 hours or more a week on a regular basis, he then falls under the purview, or she falls under the purview of the contract.
Is that, is that any kind of state law, or is that just?
That's an agreement in contract.
It's the city's contract.
The city's contract for that.
Is there, is there a, you said 20 hours or more on a regular basis, is there a definition of, you know, the threshold?
No.
But that excludes, for example, people who are summer employees?
Yes. Or if you hire somebody temporarily to do a job for three months, and if you might work them full-time, but they would not fall under purview of the contract.
But I would suggest a way to perhaps deal with Councilmember Seaman's concerns would be to establish a city policy that we will not have part, people who are part-time exclusively to save money on benefits. I think that wouldn't prohibit us from having part-time employees when that suits the needs of the provision of services. For example, I don't think that having, say, I know we have a lot of camera people who cover, say, festivals, like the Fourth of July, there were many camera people, and having, you know, eight camera people work for four hours is not the same thing as having, you know, two full-time camera people, or whatever that comes out to be, because you need a lot of people at one time, but it wouldn't make sense to have eight camera people on staff full-time because we only need them periodically. So I don't think that's what you're talking about. And we also, and I would like to know more about the contractual labor in public works. I know that there are times, like leaf collection, when we need a great many people at one time, and it wouldn't make sense to have that many people on staff year-round because we only need them for leaf collection in the fall. But I guess the question would be, are there other cases where we could have someone on staff full-time year-round, and we wouldn't need the contractual labor? I noticed, talking about contractual labor to supplement full-time staffing resources for gardens and right-of-way, is that a question of heavy, and the need for heavy staffing during certain times of the year and not other times of the year? Is that what it's talking about?
I apologize, Ms. Brayford.
I would believe that's true, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, Ms. Brayford did actually ask if she should stay, but since she had appeared before the council before, I told her she could go. My understanding is they, they use contractual labor in a number of circumstances. I think the mayor pointed out one of them, which is certainly very significant use of temporaries during leaf collection services. If we were to have a particularly heavy snowfall, we have used contractual labor to help clear, you know, walkways in various city-owned parks, at this building, and I do believe, and Wayne can correct me if I'm wrong, I think when we have had some absences due to, you know, extended illnesses or disability on the part of an employee, I believe we have hired drivers on a temporary basis through a contractual labor, temporary agency.
Not so much the drivers, but.
Some of the laborers, perhaps.
Terry.
Thank you. We've got two issues on the table, and I'd like to talk about the full-time versus part-time. I think the example that Mr. Hobbs gave is a perfect example of where I think this council needs to make a decision, and that is a individual that comes to work for the city for a period of three months for some task, but it's eight hours a day for three months. And I would suggest that, that the city should be paying benefits to that individual. I think that the jobs that we're talking about here are typically the lowest-paying jobs in the city, and quite frequently, they're, they're staffed by younger people who may or may not have families, but are in the, the most need for, for benefits. And so I would think that this council should be establishing some criteria for when we do want to pay benefits, and where, where we feel that we don't, where we want to save that, save the money. do want to pay benefits and where we feel that we don't, where we want to save the money. I think we should err on the side of providing benefits. And for the contractual labor, again, I don't want to see the city depending on contractual labor so that we can avoid paying benefits to the people who are doing the work. Again, I really appreciate, and I don't mean to imply in any way that I don't appreciate the department managers trying to save money for the city. And this isn't to criticize at all what has happened. I just want to make sure that we are fulfilling our moral obligation too in providing benefits where it makes sense.
Go ahead.
I definitely support you conceptually. And if I thought that the council was providing part-time staff members, that the city was, and that the purpose in doing that was just to exclude benefits, I could really get behind that. But I'm not seeing that, because what I see in the information that's been provided is that the issue over whose part-time and the contractual labor is just driven by the nature of the work. And I think where we had somebody who came forward and said, you know, we could use extra hours for this, which is the senior coordinator for the recreation department, the council said, yeah, let's do that. But I think that our own staff is saying, you know, not because we don't want to pay benefits, or we wouldn't be happy to have you give us more money into our budget, but because it doesn't functionally work very well for us to have a full-time position, as the mayor pointed out with the example of the Fourth of July festival. I think that comes into play with the public works positions. So I guess I would, I need you to say directly, what leads you to believe that we're doing this to intentionally keep people from getting benefits? And, you know, what are the specific positions? Because I guess, from that perspective, I'm not seeing that. And then the other thing is that, you know, we could get some of the issues about the wage issues when we come to the living wage law, to make sure that people are being paid fairly and accurately. And then I just want to reiterate that I feel that there, I think it's good and healthy for the city and the citizens in the city to maintain some positions that are part-time, that people actually do kind of move through in the recreation department and maybe in the gardens department, so that we have jobs available to young people in our community, people who participate in the rec program, who are interested in working with youth, that can then move into a job in the rec program. And if we make those positions full-time, permanent with benefits, someone will take that job and stay in it for 15 years, maybe, which has its own benefits. But I think a good mix of those different kinds of jobs is good. And for a recreation department, in my opinion, we actually have a fair number of permanent positions, a lot more than I've experienced in other places, so.
Yeah, you asked the question of what leads me to believe that. And I think the recreation department is the biggest area where there are part-time employees who work for nineteen-and-a-half hours here in the city. And when I ask them, you know, why don't you work, you know, where else do you work? Why don't you do this as a full-time job? And their answer is, because the city won't let me work more than nineteen-and-a-half hours. But yet, there are other people doing the same task for the other half of the week. And it's like, why isn't that one full-time position instead of two half-time positions is what raised the question in my mind? And again, I, it's not to be critical, it was, it raised a concern in my mind that I wanted to bring to this council to see if there is a clear policy on what our expectation is.
Go ahead, Joy.
Thanks. I just want to also say, I agree with the spirit of what Councilmember Siemens is saying, and that this council has gone on record numerous times in exploring labor issues with the city to make sure that we aren't exploiting workers. I'm aware, four or five years ago, that the city was employing temporary labor on a full-time basis, you know, and it turned into something where they were full-time for a number of years, but they were still in this temporary status, they did not have benefits. The city council reviewed that, the city manager made the changes. So I appreciate where Teri's coming from, and I think that we do need to look closely at our labor practices to make sure that they're in keeping with the values of this community. I think also privatization is something that can get away from governments if they're not careful. I like the way this city government has been very careful about privatizing things and seeing what can be done with in-house services or with even part-time people on the payroll. I was a part-time shelve at my college library, so, you know, wasn't available for full-time work, but appreciated that those positions were there. And I think that the departments in the city are probably best able to describe what hours they need and what type of workers they need. And it doesn't hurt for us to reinforce what our values are. Looking ahead to the next agenda item, I think when Heather Muzier came tonight and supported our looking at the living wage law, that, you know, if the city council proceeds with that, that might be the place for us to more fully describe this spirit of the council, that we would like to make sure our labor practices are not exploiting workers and are being as fair and efficient as possible.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe could sort of focus us a little bit? I would agree with the things that the members of the council have said. And my suggestion would be that we establish a policy which we can put in writing, which says two things, that no employee shall be employed less than full-time for the purpose of not paying that employee benefits. And the second part of it being that part-time employment shall be scheduled to best serve the needs of, we can say, the residents or the city, or something like that. With the idea that, for example, that would mean the camera crews could be scheduled at the time that they needed to actually, you know, photograph the events. And, you know, people in the computer center could be scheduled to cover weekends and evenings because that appears to be when there's a need for that kind of thing. But that nobody would be employed less than full-time for the purpose of not paying benefits. And I think the next person I saw was Ruben.
I agree in general with that policy. And I also think that, I also agree with Councilmember Clay's comment about supporting part-time positions as entry-level positions for particularly youth and others who want to work part-time. I do think that one thing that might help the discussion and might at least address some of the concerns that Councilmember Siemens has raised, is if the city manager did a, I hope, fairly quick survey of just how many part-time people there are and how many hours they work, and that sort of saying how long they've been in, how long a particular person has been in the job, and so on. So we'd have a little data to go along with the discussion. It's easy to imagine that in our city, there might be one or two people who are on the, in the gray area, that is, who wish to work longer hours and can't. But until we have a sense of just how many there are that we're talking about, is this a big problem or a small problem? It's hard to, it's hard to go forward.
Yeah, two quick things. Just one, in reaction to your proposal, if that's the direction that we end up going, I think we would need to change the language that you have about full-time, since it's not the full-time status, that it's the crossing that threshold of 20 hours.
Okay.
Which is part-time.
Okay.
But I would propose that maybe we head for something a little simpler and just provide either written or verbal instructions that the city manager knows that the sense of the council is that we don't want to see people working something like up to nineteen-and-a-half hours for the sole purpose of avoiding paying benefits. And that it's, as the city manager or her designee realizes that there might be a situation where that either is happening or has a potential for happening, that the, that the direction be that, to go ahead and schedule people as appropriate and pay benefits as necessary.
Okay. I like the way you said that, schedule people as appropriate and pay benefits as necessary.
So I'm going to venture a guess at what I think the issue is here. I think it sounds like we've got employees who we have knowledge of, who are part-time employees who would like to be full-time. Is that the issue? We have part-time employees who would like to be full-time?
I think that's the issue, yeah.
And for whatever reason, they've been with this, I've met some of the folks in the recreation department, mostly men that I've met thus far, although I've seen there are women out there too, great guys, grew up in Tacoma Park, went through the rec program, now they're part-time employees, and they'd like to be full-time, but there doesn't happen to be an opening right now. And I think that there's some different ways that we could address that. And one is, we could provide 50% benefits for people who work 50% time. So if they wanted to have benefits, we would pay 50%, and they would, they would pay the other 50%. I've been in jobs where I've done that before. We could provide the city manager with a flexible pool of funds so that when people got into that situation, we might be able to move them so that they have benefits, but they don't become, they don't necessarily become permanent where we're adding additional positions. So maybe we've got somebody who wants to work full-time for a year while they're here in college, and we want to make benefits accessible. That's another thing that we could do. But I think one of the sort of underlying issues is that we have, we have folks who want to work full-time, and we don't really have positions for them or capacity in the budget. And there's a couple of other things that we could do there, is provide some more staff development for folks and help them to build their job skills so that they can move on to full-time positions that aren't necessarily in Tacoma Parks, but maybe they are. We've hired, we're talking about the recreation department again. We've hired a couple of new folks in the recreation department, and we didn't hire from within, which is a clue that if we want to provide upward mobility for the folks who are in our program, that for whatever reason, you know, we might want to provide some more staff development and more training. So that's something else we could do. And we could have a policy that, all things being equal, we hire internally first. Those are some other suggestions. To get at what I think is what.
Teri?
I appreciate your suggestions. And I would say the thing that is curious to me is that if we have people who are, whose hours are limited to less than 20 per week, and they're interested in being full-time, and other positions become available in the same department for less than 20 hours a week, why those people are not considered for those positions so that they could get the additional hours and be a full-time employee?
They can be, all they need to apply. We announce all the jobs, under the union contract, all the full-time non-management jobs have to be advertised in-house, and we have to accept them if they're fully qualified.
No, maybe I didn't make myself clear. I was talking about when a, another part-time job became available, why that isn't rolled into one full-time job? If you have a part-time employee wanting to be full-time, we have another opening, there's not a time conflict, why that doesn't roll into a full-time position?
I can't do that now.
Yeah, I'm not expecting an answer. I'm saying that that is the other scenario, where that seems like a perfect example of where, not that we're doing it consciously of keeping people from getting benefits, but the effect is, it keeps two people from getting benefits instead of having one full-time employee.
Can I make a suggestion as to where we go from here? I made a proposal for a policy, and Bruce, I think, improved it. I'm a little bit leery to get into having the council review city employees and decide how many hours they should be working. I'm not sure that that's going to get us anywhere. Certainly, if individual members of the council want to look at individual jobs, I don't have a problem with that. But I, I think if we establish a policy for the city manager that no employees will be employed for less than 20 hours for the purpose of not paying benefits, and that we will schedule people, you said as appropriate, or we could say depending on the need, and pay benefits if it becomes necessary, without, in other words, not scheduling people on the basis of avoiding benefits. I think that that would, that would be very clear in addressing the main concern. And then if there is some concern on the council that a particular position is not in accordance with that policy, then I think the council could take that up with the city manager, and that would be the appropriate thing for us to do. But I think the first step is for us to establish the policy. And so, I don't know, Bruce suggested that we provide it with direction, I don't, provide the city manager with verbal direction. We could also write it down or ask the city manager to put together a draft for us that we could then modify.
Verbal or written?
Verbal or written. So we could, we can draft it, we can ask the city manager to draft it for us, and we can review it. And I think that would be the first step, and that would clearly establish what the policy was to be. And then if we had some sense that that was, the policy was not being carried out, then I think it would be appropriate to address that with the city manager.
I don't expect that to be, to be the issue. I think the main thing is to make sure that we have clearly articulated our, the council's position, and certainly having it in writing is a preferable way. But before we did that, I would like to get the city manager's input on this.
You know, I think one of the challenges is just that there's a wide variety of reasons about why someone works part-time, and their individual circumstances. So I think, as I thought about this in preparing the agenda information, it's very difficult to kind of craft a policy that's one size that fits all, because I think as Councilmember Clay and I think Councilmember Snipper have alluded to, there are certainly opportunities where we want to encourage younger people to kind of come through and, you know, pick up a few hours. I mean, I know many of the staff here, obviously, who are working through college and, you know, may just choose to work a few hours a week as they, you know, go through their college days, and they may or may not go into recreation or whatever field that they're working for us in that capacity. And I think in regard to some of the specific issues that Councilmember Siemens have raised, you know, the one reality is when we put together a budget, or I put together my budget for the council, you know, we're going to make certain assumptions about what slots may work well, and we budget for that. Now, it may be that we hire a certain individual to work in a part-time capacity who may have the flexibility, you know, to work 10 hours up at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, but because of that individual's own circumstances, you know, may come to us and say, well, I can pick up 20 hours someplace that we had initially envisioned as another individual's job. You know, I think the question, I guess I would have with the council is, there's only, there is a budget that we're expected to live within. So if you happen to have those unique cases where somebody may, through their own personal circumstances, be able to fill, I think that maybe the two different occupations that Councilmember Siemens alluded to, and we didn't anticipate that, there clearly is a fairly significant cost to that. When someone is working 20 hours or more per week, we don't do the 50/50 thing that Councilmember Clay alluded to, is it's what's a system that I'm used to, actually, prior to coming to Tacoma Park. We pay the full cost of benefits, and Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but just.
I believe that we can do that under the contract.
Is that within the union contract? I guess that's a question.
Yeah, I believe that, I'd have to go back and read it, but I believe that for medical benefits, we can prorate it based on the hours they work.
You know, I think, Wayne, if someone had had full family coverage and it was not prorated, what does that run, more or less, cost-wise?
prorated, what does that run, more or less, cost-wise?
Probably in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars a year for a single coverage.
No, for full family.
Full family is about twelve thousand.
Yes. I mean, I think there's some of those issues that I think if that's something that we do, we may need to look at a little bit further. We can't always anticipate everything.
For full family, we pay, we're not paying the whole twelve thousand.
Right.
We pay eighty percent.
And I think, Councilmember Siemens, you, I know you had alluded to some situations. And I think, as I indicated, we make certain assumptions when we budget. We also have the union contract that obviously we are obligated to abide by. I am aware that there have been certain part-time employees who have expressed interest in, they're more interested in the hours than actually the benefits. But the way the union contract is structured, if we are to schedule them in excess of those hours, we have an obligation to provide that benefit. So that's one of those situations where what that particular individual may want is sort of in conflict with an agreement the city has made with the union. And I don't think there's any flexibility in terms of that.
Well, you could flex, you know, if somebody is hired to work fifteen hours a week and one week they work twenty-five.
Right.
You know, that's, that doesn't create a problem. If they consistently work over twenty hours, then it would call...
Yeah. And I think the situation Councilmember Siemens is alluding to though, is someone who perhaps would like to pick up more hours on an ongoing basis. And that's certainly something that we're sensitive to, so as not to violate the union agreement as well.
And I think the situation that you just posed is exactly the situation that, where the city is not doing it because it would cost us benefits. And that's, that's why I thought that it was important for the council to talk about it because it is money. It is a...
Well, and I would say, I would actually clarify that. We hired someone perhaps to work ten hours a week is a situation that I think is much more common. Someone else may leave and that person says, well, I'd like to pick up that person's shift. I wouldn't say the city is doing it to avoid paying it. I think we're being respectful of a union contract that this council has authorized and that we've entered into an agreement. So, I mean, it's kind of semantics, but it's not a matter, there are some limitations...
But it would cost us benefits if we did it. And so we're not doing it because it would cost us benefits. I mean, that's, maybe it's semantics, but it's looking at the horse from two different sides.
Yeah, I think it's two things. There's obviously the cost, but there's also the union agreement. I mean, the reality is, and I think this council has talked about it, I don't have unbridled authority just to spend money that this council has not authorized.
Right. And that's why I thought that we needed to talk about it here at the council. I'm not blaming you.
Wayne, I'm not taking it.
In terms of next steps, my suggestion is that we go ahead and formulate this written policy with the help of the city manager and whoever else she chooses to get involved in this. The council, take a look at this policy and make sure that it's consistent with what we're trying to do. If we want to take up the suggestion about offering part-time employees part benefits, I think that the next step would be to have the city manager provide us with figures on either, well, on both, what that would cost individual employees to do that. And secondly, what it would cost the city to do that for X amount for so many people. Because I know it's not the same thing. Because I know we only pay a certain percentage of even full-time employees. So presumably, we pay the same percentage of part-time employees. So if it's eighty percent, then if somebody was picking up half, they'd really be picking up sixty percent, right? They'd get eighty percent of half, which is forty percent.
If somebody only has part-time benefits, does it mean that it counts on what day of the week you have your accident or what do you get fixed? I don't know how it works.
No, no. Depending on who pays for them. You have a full benefit, but then you have to pay half of it. I mean, I've actually been in organizations that provide half of...
You get the full benefit.
Yeah, you get the full benefit, but you have to fund the other half.
Okay.
And if you choose not to, you don't get it.
Wayne, let me just correct you. If someone is working, say, twenty-five hours a week on a regular basis, we pay the same percentage for that individual as we would for someone working forty hours a week?
We, that's been the practice, but I believe the contract permits us to prorate it.
I just wanted to clarify what we're doing now because I think there's some confusion about that.
I think that's an issue that the council's going to have to look at some numbers before we can go forward. But I think we can go forward with a policy, with drafting a policy that the council could then look at, based on what people have said. It seems pretty clear, and I think that there seems to be widespread agreement, that the policy would state that employees are not employed for less than twenty hours for the purpose of not paying benefits. Then that's the basis of the policy. And Bruce's suggestion that the hours would be scheduled on, sort of according to the needs of the services being provided. And if that meant we had to pay benefits, then so be it.
And then I would also like to get that report on what would be the effect if we just prorated the benefits, what that would cost.
Yeah. That's, that was the other half of what I was suggesting, that we should get that information. Okay. Whoever mentioned, it was not a coincidence that these two discussions were scheduled together because I think there's significant overlap between, as we've already gotten into, some of the issues that I think are going to come under the living wage ordinance.
Were there any questions left on the contractual labor? I don't know if we came to any conclusions on that.
Well, my understanding is that the answer on the contractual labor is that we contract for people on the basis of the number of hours. And I think if we put this policy into place, we wouldn't be dealing with, well, it's a combination of two things. It comes under the living wage piece and it also comes under the less than twenty hours piece. Because what you're talking about in terms of health benefits, I think then lops over into the living wage discussion.
It may or may not, depending on where the council goes with the living wage.
But I think that's a good place to talk about it.
Okay. I say tentatively.
Okay. And the city manager pulled together a fair amount of information for us. Do you want to talk about what you've got here?
Sure. The original...
I think for anybody who's interested, there's also copies over on the, in the board on the side there.
Yeah. I think back in mid-March, Seth Grimes, who happens to be in the audience tonight, a resident in Ward One, had addressed the council proposing that the city enact its own local living wage law. And I think at that time, Mr. Grimes referenced both the living wage law that's in effect for Montgomery County and at that time, some legislation that was pending in the state legislature that was ultimately, did become law. And I've included in the agenda packet copies of the legislation for both Montgomery County and the state. As I went about trying to research this issue and putting together the agenda packet, and I can now say I know a lot more about it than I did, where the council expressed some interest in this, there really are a number of policy issues that the council needs to address. Clearly, Montgomery County's bill and the state law basically deals with contractors to the city and basically sets up thresholds of contracts that would trigger their respective hourly living wage rate. I included in your packet some information from the Living Wage Resource Center, which is actually a website that is set up by Acorn, who I think many, an agency that, or organization that many of the members of the council are probably familiar with. They do a lot of neighborhood organizing and have been around for decades. And that's basically the information that is right behind the blue sheet. So as you'll notice, you know, some of the issues, and I think one of the critical ones is, who would the living wage law apply to? As I went through and looked at probably the over a hundred jurisdictions and certainly didn't look at all the laws, but this website actually has summaries of policies of many jurisdictions. And they really are all over the map. Baltimore City and Prince George's County both have laws. I did not include those in your packet, but I do have copies of those. Theirs is really very much geared towards construction activities. And they actually have schedules for the various trades and the type of hourly wage rates that would be in effect for their living wage. Others, such as Montgomery County and the state of Maryland, their laws are somewhat broader. And they basically, as I indicated, set a threshold and their hourly living wage rates are basically triggered by contracts in those amounts. As I went about researching it, I also found a number of municipalities or counties that actually apply their living wage laws, not as much towards contractors, but to their own staff. And also found a few that also impose whatever living wage law they had on employers in the city. So it wasn't just contractors that the city hired or their own staff. It was actually imposed on every juris, every employer within their corporate boundaries. Whether or not that would be allowed in the state of Maryland, I'm not sure, without getting some guidance from the city attorney. So I think that's one of the critical questions. And I think as we were trying to prepare the agenda packet, I wasn't really sure where the council's interest lies, but that's certainly something that we could research further. Besides the laws of the state of Maryland and Montgomery County, I also included some information on two local jurisdictions and the state of Virginia. One was the city of Charlottesville and the city of Alexandria. And as you'll note, interestingly enough, theirs basically does not apply to construction activities, but tends to cover more service-related contracts. And both of their laws are geared towards service contracts that are competitively bid. So what's going to be impacted are things such as custodial services, if those are privatized, in some cases, private security services that may be used for the city for a variety of reasons. Landscape maintenance, parking lot management, things of that nature. I did talk to someone in Charlottesville because I was curious, as I was looking at their legislation, as to what it did apply to, because there was a specific exemption for contracts for the purchase or lease of goods. And so as I thought about it, I wondered what else was left when you started exempting that and construction management, construction services. And what I was told by their procurement staffer is what they looked at is things that were manufactured, probably were manufactured outside of their corporate boundaries, outside of the state boundaries. And they were trying to identify services that they thought would probably most have a local impact. So they looked at individuals who probably lived in their community or in the immediate surrounding area. And their primary focus was concern about what those individuals might be earning. So that's why both of their laws were probably very similarly structured. The other guiding force between any of the living wage laws in Virginia is, some of you may be aware, that Virginia is a Dillon rural state. And so if the authority is not specifically granted to the municipalities, it basically reverts to the state. So localities in Virginia actually have very limited authority in many areas. And apparently, there was a lot of discussion with the Attorney General's office in Virginia at one time of whether municipalities could even have their own living wage laws. You'll note that in the case of Charlottesville, what they look at in terms of their living wage rate, unlike the state of Maryland and Montgomery County, is their guiding principle is what they pay their own employees. And their living wage rate is basically the lowest hourly rate that they would pay to any of their own staff. Alexandria actually took a different approach and basically kind of came up with its own blended rate based on certain federal indices that are widely published. Truthfully, what we tried to do in putting together the agenda packet is just to give the council a sense of the diversity of laws that are out there, because there really is no one-size-fits-all. It's really what the local jurisdiction is most comfortable with.
Well, I very much appreciate your putting together all this information. And I did spend some time taking a look at it and looking at the information from the Living Wage Resource Center. And it seems to me the council can go in one of two directions. We can start with the questions that the Living Wage Resource Center outlines and sort of go through each one, one by one. Or we can take as a template, one of the existing living wage laws and modify it to the extent that we find it's advisable to do that. And I guess I would be, since I schedule council meetings, I'd be very much in favor of the latter doing that. And I guess I would recommend that if the council wants to move forward on this issue, that we use Montgomery County's as our template. And I say that for several reasons. One is that Montgomery County is the entity that's closest to Tacoma Park. It's in the same state and it's a local jurisdiction as opposed to a state jurisdiction. I remember the debate surrounding the living wage law in Montgomery County. And I thought that many of the issues that might normally come up and the passage of such a law were discussed on the county council at that time and were dealt with. Another reason is that if you look at the state of Maryland versus Montgomery County, in terms of the current wage rate, the current maximum wage rate, Montgomery County's is higher. And hooking our law to a Montgomery County law, then lets Montgomery County do all the computations and we don't have to, you know, have our, pay our staff to go through and research all this information. But we know that we're, I mean, we piggyback on county law for a number of other things because we feel that we're, you know, reasonably typical, reasonably typical Montgomery County jurisdiction. And so I think that it would make sense to use Montgomery County's living wage law as a template and then take a look at anything that we might want to modify. I think the thing that, that I had a question about, one of the things that was interesting is the, is the threshold level. Montgomery County has a threshold level of contracts, total county contracts of fifty thousand dollars. I'm assuming that means a year, right?
Yes.
And then the state of Maryland has a hundred thousand dollars contracts. Now, I, you know, I guess the question that I would have in terms of our current contracts, if we set a threshold of fifty thousand dollars, how many, how many of the contracts would fall outside that threshold?
I couldn't venture a guess.
Yeah, it's going to vary from year to year. I mean, off the top of my head, the ones that come to mind, you're saying that would be less than fifty thousand dollars?
No, that would be, no, over fifty thousand dollars.
We would do typically more than fifty thousand dollars a year, obviously, in street-related work. It came close to contract the council passed this evening for the stormwater work. Wasn't quite at the fifty thousand dollar threshold, but I think that's a typical project that may reach that level because of the nature of specialized work. Any type of construction project, obviously, building construction project the city may do in the future could be, would be impacted by that. And beyond that, I would say there's probably been some professional services contracts that I can think of during my tenure where you're doing streetscape design, perhaps. The New Hampshire Avenue charrettes would fall into that category. I think those are the ones that readily come to mind.
And I guess the second piece of information that would be useful to know is just if we made the assumption that we had a living wage rate of eleven ninety-five an hour or ten ninety-five if, if health insurance benefits were paid, how many of those contracts would that actually affect? That would, that's going to take a little bit more research because we would need to find out what those contractors actually pay their employees.
You know, I think it's going to be a little difficult. I think for most of our contracts, you know, we don't ask, we have not historically asked for wage rates.
I think we would have to...
We could go back to some of the companies we've done business with and ask them to give us some guidance of what their wage scales are. But that's not information we would have on file. So that would probably be kind of the staff's best guess, quite frankly. Or information we could try to get from past contracts. I'm not sure that's necessarily going to be a determining factor of where we go moving forward.
Could we call up the companies and ask them, the ones that we currently have contracts for? I mean, I think we should probably stay away from people who are currently bidding. I think that would get messy. But people we currently have, like, street contracts for and just ask them what their, what their hourly wage rates are for various categories of employees.
Sure. We could do that.
I'd like your idea of using Montgomery County as a template. I have one observation and one question on the information provided in general. One thing that I found interesting was in the information from the state, that they talked about the small business effect and the fact that it's harder for small firms to spread the increased costs over the smaller client base. And therefore, in some ways, a living wage puts them at a competitive disadvantage in bidding for contracts. So if we think that is going to be an effect for our law, I wonder if there's anything that we can do that would help small, small employers in any way. I'm not sure what that might be, but I thought that was an interesting commentary. The other question I have is, I noticed that, I think it was Alexandria and Charlottesville both exclude construction. And I'm not quite sure I understand why. My sense is that in the, in any of the construction areas that I'm familiar with, basically that the current Montgomery County annualized wage of eleven ninety-five an hour is pretty much what anybody's going to be paying. I'm not aware of much below that. I don't, I'm not aware of much below that, and I wonder why they exclude it. Do we have any sense of that?
Why they excluded it?
Yeah.
You, there, one thing is Virginia's a right-to-work state, you realize?
Yeah.
So they may have lower wage rates.
My impression is, and, and that's based on just strictly my conversation with the procurement individual in Charlottesville, I did place a call to someone in Alexandria, and I haven't gotten a call back, is probably that it was somewhat dictated by what they thought they could get away with based on the Attorney General's opinion.
Okay.
My understanding is that the Attorney General in Virginia, and I think this may be going back a number of years, had specifically stated that municipalities could not even enact a living wage law. I think there may have been those few souls who went ahead and did it, but I think they were probably trying to be very circumspect in what they did. It was interesting as I went through the Acorn side, especially in the Midwest, there were a number of municipalities, for example, in Wisconsin, who had passed living wage laws, and then you'd see the footnote that they were subsequently repealed by state law. The state of Michigan actually intervened with its municipalities and basically said they would withhold any state revenue sharing funds to any locality that enacted a living wage law. So I don't think Virginia went quite that far, but I think there was certainly some limitations that were conveyed to them by the, the state.
Yeah, because I know that in the case of Arlington, that they passed domestic partnership and were told that they can't do that and cut of the law. So I'm, I'm very familiar with how Virginia works, and I, and I didn't know if that was the reason why. I just didn't know if there was something that might affect us and, and, you know, something that I didn't quite see. So I'm, I'm happy to take Montgomery County as a template as well.
Yes, I, I also support taking Montgomery County as a template for all the reasons you cited. The only change I would feel strongly about is adding the state exemption of, for under 18-year-olds. That's one of the exemptions in the state that's not in, in Montgomery County. So I think that would be a useful addition. And I also think Montgomery County would be strengthened a bit if we added some of the sort of pro-union language that Acorn is talking about.
Any in particular?
No, I don't have anything in particular.
I think there's a fair amount of it. I'm trying to remember where I saw it.
Right.
I would, by the way, I would agree with you about the under 18. Basically, the, the idea behind the living wage is that it's a family wage, and there may be a few 18-year-olds that have families, but.
17-year-olds, probably not.
Yes, that's 17 and 16 and 15-year-olds, and if they do, maybe we don't want to encourage that anyway.
Or is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree with all of that. Montgomery County as the model, adding the exemption for folks under 18. And I wanted to point out that the health insurance credit that's in Montgomery County is actually for the entire cost of the health insurance, the share that the employer pays amortized into an hourly rate, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
So it could be eight, so what's the cost for a single person's health insurance? $800?
For, per what?
For just a person for the, for the month.
For a month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it could be a significant.
Probably a little less.
Chunk.
Some of that pro-union language is on the second page after the, the last blue sheet. There's like a full page on the left-hand side, possible add-ons, Roman numeral two.
Right, but there's no specifics as to what it might be, is there?
Right, it's just very general.
Right.
Language.
I would agree with what has been said by other council members. Just out of curiosity, Barb, does, how does city employees fall in comparison to this living wage?
Is there a particular group of employees, council member, or you're talking about existing?
Just, yeah, existing city employees. I just wonder how city wages are as compared to living wage.
Yeah, I'm actually, we had sort of anticipated this question, so Mr. Hobbs was kind enough to put together some information. And Wayne, if I misspeak in terms of the terminology, let me know. In terms of the, those positions that are actually classified on the wage scale, which would be the scales that are adopted by the council every year as part of the budget process, the lowest wage for most city employees is 1277 per hour. Obviously, there are some seasonal staff, which basically is generally is going to be high school and college students. It really varies depending on what position those individuals hold. I think we looked at recreation because that's one of the primary users of part-time employees and seasonal employees, as we've talked about. So for the seasonal staff, it ranges anywhere from what would be the state minimum wage of 615 an hour, all the way up to someone who is probably more of a program leader for those seasonal positions, which go up to about 1150 per hour. Some other positions that are not on the scale that is adopted by the council are going to be substitute positions in the library. Those are typically going to be shelvers and library assistants. Their rates currently are either 1238 per hour or 1391 per hour. And then we have a variety of other positions which are not seasonal but work in recreation on a part-time basis. And those are basically sort of a derivative of the scale that the council, if I can speak.
Just, just one correction. All the wages were, have been set by council.
Okay.
Even those 615.
Right, okay.
That's when, adopted by ordinance. That has not been updated in a couple of years, that's all.
Which we, which Wayne and I have talked about doing, but the other positions with rec that are more year-round are either going to be program attendants or program coordinators. Those currently employed either start at 1354 an hour or 1521 per hour. So I would say typically unless they're seasonal employees.
How are the public works, public works?
Those are going to be the, you're talking about the contractual labor, or are you talking about?
Right, this living wage thing covers the contractual labor, right?
It, right now, it would basically be geared on, depends how the council sets it up, in terms of the threshold of the contracts. I think the way, as I read both the state law and Montgomery County's, which obviously the council has talked about most extensively, it would suggest that these are actually contracts that are approved by the council for a, a specific project of a certain value or a certain task. With the contractual labor that is used by public works, we use an agency, and basically there's not a fixed amount. So I think if that is something that the council's interested in, I, I believe that would probably be a deviation from Montgomery County's law. I don't think their law probably anticipates that particular type of usage.
Right.
Because we're not entering into a specific amount with those agencies.
I think we should talk about that at least as we move forward with the living wage discussion. How about for the non-contractual public works employees, or what are lower, lower wages there?
You're talking about like for a, a laborer?
Laborers, yea.
The lowest would be those that I, I mentioned, which would be, Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, the 1277 per hour, because those are basically on the wage scale that the council adopts for assignment.
That's the starting wage.
That's the starting, the lowest starting wage for any of those positions.
We have very few people as low as that, most popular about that.
I think, I think we could also adopt a policy, and it sounds like it wouldn't really change what we're doing, that the regular wage scales that are paid city employees shall, no, no level on that wage scale shall be less than the living wage. And it sounds like that's not going to really affect anything right now, but that would, that could possibly affect in the future, depending on what happens, it could possibly affect.
I think it depends how you define it. I mean, you could obviously have someone who is a college student who would.
No, I'm not talking about the students.
Well, I'm saying, but if they're, unless you specifically talk about that it's seasonal positions or positions that are not of a certain duration.
Right.
It could be triggered, and that would have a fiscal impact.
And it seems like you might open yourself up for some discrimination if you base it on age, discrimination could.
Well, I think, I think you can, it, it, it has been done in the past on under 18, and I think that we would have no problem with that. I think what we could decide without discrimination is that certain jobs, like, you know, summer recreation aides, are designed for young people. Now, we can't, we can't say they, only young people can get those jobs, but if they're designed for young people, we could basically exclude them as they are, I believe now, for the same reasons that Colleen mentioned, that we want to make them available to people who are just starting out their careers and who want to get some experience and some references that they could point to for future jobs, that we could exclude those from, they're now excluded from our regular wage scales. I'm more talking about our regular wage scales and not the ones for essentially summer positions.
Yeah, I think typically what you, what I've seen is in any kind of deviation from personnel practices, you're going to define it by positions that are not meant to last more than a certain period of time. That's typically going to be summer, but you could have someone who's, you know, works in recreation programs during the fall season because he or she is taking, you know, time off for a job or in-between jobs or things like that.
So it's like a three-month, that, that.
One of the laws, I, I.
Like during the holidays.
Right.
They run camps and they use some young people.
Typically, what you'll see is perhaps a position that's not planned to last, and one of the laws actually has it in there, it's either 19 or 120 days or 13 weeks or some standard like that.
Okay. I think those, I think those are good ones, those are good things. Are there other things people can think of that we should be thinking about? I think this is going to require a fair amount of follow-up, and, and I'm sort of interested to, to follow up a little bit on the issue that Terry brought up, which is the contracted services in public works. Now, they don't meet the 50,000 threshold, but I would still be interested to know if we, now, this is going to be a little tricky because presumably if we call up these, these contract labor folks and say, "How much you pay your people per hour?", they're going to refuse to tell us. I mean, this is almost.
I believe Darryl already has some of that.
Well, I, I think we know what we pay the agency.
Right, but we don't know what they pay people.
We don't know how much of that, the employee, based on, I guess, just past experience. I think those agencies, it tends to vary a lot depending on whether you have someone who's truly just doing it for a short period of time. There are individuals who just prefer that style of working because of the flexibility. And I think if an agency has a, a good temporary worker, if you will, who has been with them a long time, they may command a different hourly rate than someone who's just sort of passing through. So that's probably an issue that may require, I guess, further discussion. I think the council could basically probably indicate that you want to see individuals pay no less than a certain amount, and whatever cut, if you will, the agency takes for its placement services would just be built upon that. That's my assumptions, since I'm not that familiar with what they do, but.
So we could ask them, if we were to pass a law saying that you, for the people you provide to us on contract, you shall pay no less than 1195 or 1095 with health benefits, if we were to say, so we would say to them, if we were to require you to do that, would that affect what we're?
Undoubtedly, yeah. It would, it would impact what we're paying.
Okay, then the question would be, how, how much would that cost us to do?
My guess is since those agencies are responsible for providing workers' comp insurance for those who they hire and place, they would take whatever wage rate the city established, and they would build in their own fixed cost for placement services, any applicable insurance because they, they are responsible if someone is, is injured.
So they could give us an answer if we said, "If we were to do this, what would your, what would it cost us?"
Yeah, I think they could do that.
They could give us that information.
Yes.
Well, then maybe that's the way to do it.
And, and what would be interesting to know would be a sense of whether that, you know, I, I can imagine if that happened, the word getting out that among workers at that temp agency, that city of Tacoma Park temp jobs are very desirable because they pay more, is that going to attract better temps, or is that just going to make the whole, the whole pool clamor for it?
More senior temps likely.
And therefore not really gain us, gain us any benefit? It would be, it would be interesting to try and figure out the answer to that one. Because if, if it, in the process, you know, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours, if we, if we do that to help people, do we in turn get any, any better kind of money's worth?
I think that's probably a multifaceted issue.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure there's an answer to it.
I'm not sure we're going to have an answer to it, and I'm not, I think so much of when someone is available depends upon, you know, once again, I think the nature of the person, if that's something they're doing, that they're, you know, doing year-round or something they're just doing because they moved to an area, they're between jobs, they're trying to get back into the workforce. I'm not sure that we could count that the word would get out and that's somehow going to impact who we attract. I think so much of it is our calling up because we have someone who has the flu and we need to place someone immediately. That tends to be probably the more common reason that the city will use people in an ice storm or something like that.
I can tell you just based on the experience of a friend of mine who worked by choice temp, he was in the computer field, and so that probably is a different, we're talking a different wage rate than laborers. But he did it by choice, and in the agency he worked for, it was done on seniority or on how well the scheduler liked. And so they started with the most senior slash their most favorite people, and then worked down the list until they got somebody willing to do the job.
With, with most of the temp agencies that we deal with, both for anything, if we're displeased with an employee, we send them back and they'll replace them almost immediately.
So that might give us a little bit more clout because we would be, we would be a bad job to lose. I think we've loaded you down with a fair amount of additional information to get for us. Is there anything else before we do that, any other information we should try and get from the city staff before we take this up? I don't think it's likely we're going to be able to have time to take it up before the fall. So I, but I think we, if, if the council's comfortable with using Montgomery County as a template and just looking at this additional information, I think we know the direction that we're going. Anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, we're charmed.